Andrew?
Thank you, Chair Lawson Rimmer. Before we begin this afternoon's session, I would like to note for the record that Chair Pro Temagiri is participating via teleconference. As such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. And the first item will be for Chair Pro Temagiri to make a statement about participating remotely, as well as state whether anyone over the age of 18 is in the room with her, as well as their relationship to the supervisors. We'll turn it over to Chair Pro Temagiri.
Thank you. Can't hear me okay?
We sure can. Thank you.
Great. I am participating remotely under the Just Cause Provision of AB 2449 because I am not feeling well and I am unable to attend in person. No person over the age of 18 is present in the room with me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to item number 17. This is the Standing Up for Due Process, Liberties, Enforcement, and Accountability Rules Ordinance. This is my item, but before speaking to it, I will start with public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Rimmer. We have 40 requests to speak on this item, 23 in person, and 17 requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received 77 e-commerce comments, 75 in support, and two in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 17 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite for the first three individuals Belinda Long, Brian Kogle, and Jamie Howell.
Good afternoon. I am Brian Kogle, and I am a member of the Board of San Diego Organizing Project. Many people have by now seen the fake AI video Trump posted of himself wearing a crown, flying a fighter jet over crowds of American citizens, and dumping raw sewage on them. That's your guy, Jim Desmond. Are you okay with that? Or are you going to stand up for your constituents? Or are you going to continue to support his not-so-metaphorically dumping on Americans? The blatant disregard of the Constitution and our civil rights must be stopped. I urge you to respect the Constitution, the right of due process, stop ISIS trampling on our rights and the law. This is not a left- or right issue. This is a moral versus immoral issue. I urge you, please vote for safety, for due process, for the Constitution, for human rights. Please vote yes on items 17 and 18. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers. Allegedly Audra, Vanessa Regoza, and Jesse Gonzalez.
My name is Jamie Howell, for the record. I'm in support of the clear ordinance. I urge all the supervisors in favor to vote in favor of this ordinance because it will help keep accountability and transparency for all. The other issue is, supervisors Anderson, Desmond, I want you guys to think about it from a different lens when you make your vote. I want you to think about it as if you were stopped in a traffic stop, as if you were crossing the border or whatever the issue may be. Think about it from your perspective, how you would want to be treated and how you would feel if you needed the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jesse Gonzalez, and I'm a proud SIU Local 221 member and county employee. I've been working at the San Diego County Psychiatric Hospital for 13 years now. We're a psychiatric emergency room where people come for help to stabilize their mental health and receive care without prejudice. But because of the current climate of fear, their needs will not be met, and their trust is being broken. When patients are afraid to call for help, our programs cannot succeed. These clinics must remain a safe haven for people in crisis. The Clear Ordinance protects due process, patients, and client privacy, and ensures our programs remain safe and accessible. We urge the Board to vote yes to protect staff, our clients, and every resident in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Mark, Kristin Carriga, and Jennifer Roydson.
I find it interesting that the people that have been, you know, eroding and taking our rights are sitting here talking about how they're being taken, and we want to stop that as soon as, you know, illegal immigrants are the ones that are being spoken about. And it's interesting because they should be proud to be treated like an American. I mean, Americans don't have civil liberties. We've been fighting for them for quite some time. American families get ripped apart limb by limb, and, you know, I mean, that's what happens with abortion. So it's like, just interesting when people like Paloma are sitting here saying, "Our rights are being eroded and taken," when you're actively engaged in it. And people actually believe that you care about people when you don't. You guys sit here and you silence people. You've been depriving our rights for decades, and yet you sit here and want to, you know, protect the rights of illegal immigrants. And it's just interesting to see who you guys side with and what you actually care about.
I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Erin Sermoto-Grossi, Jay Roydson, Brenda.
Mark, I'm not even going to pull out the stack that I have that thick for everyone out there, like, a couple of inches high, that's just scratching the surface of the stories, news stories of... And I have nothing against illegal immigrants. If I was one, I would want to come here because Newsom has made it so attractive. But it is against the law. It is breaking our Medikal system completely. In fact, just the other day, someone in the legislature, don't have time to think of his name, said, "If we didn't spend $12 billion on illegal immigrants," not legal immigrants, not immigrants, illegal immigrants, "healthcare, we would balance the budget." But we're not going to, and we're suffering. Our real citizens are going to deeply suffer for that. You guys have made this possible. The crimes are stacked that high, rapists, murderers, unbelievable. Thanks a lot, Chair.
Next speaker, please.
The Board, Erin Sermoto-Grossi, Associate Director at Alliance San Diego. We are supportive of the item. However, I do want to mention that we are disappointed to see a couple of key components that were in the San Diego ordinance have been struck out, at least initially, in the San Diego County version. So the pieces I'm referring to are the pieces that would have increased transparency and accountability when participating in joint task force operations, and the piece that would have clarified law enforcement role when responding to immigration enforcement incidents. We know that federal agents try to utilize loopholes to have our local law enforcement help them with immigration enforcement. We've seen this most with joint task forces, when, for example, agents choose to, in the words of former Sheriff Gore, self-deploy when they are called, or, in some cases, federal agents will falsely claim they were attacked to try to get other agencies to respond and cover it up with their own use of force violations. The public has a right to know how our county resources and local law enforcement are being used in these...
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers. Patricia Mondragon, Jesse Schmitty, Clint Carney.
My name is Brenda. I am a member of San Diego Organizing Project and a parishioner of Our Lady of Guadalupe. I live in the district under Supervisor Anderson. Together with SDOP, we have gathered with a total of 650 community members, all voicing the same concern and personal experiences of fear, frustration, anger, and sadness due to the hatred and violence of the current administration. Our human rights and dignity are no longer being respected, and I'm talking for everybody, not just our immigrant brothers and sisters. I'm here today to be the voice of my immigrant brothers and sisters, especially who currently are being persecuted. What we are seeing, hearing, and living is not normal. We want protections for all because that is our right. The ordinance presented today is the bare minimum that could be done to start protecting our communities and to ensure our constitutional rights are protected because we all have the right to due process. Do you not see how your communities are suffering, or are you going to choose to look away?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Clint Carney. I'm a resident of District 3. I'm on the advisory board of San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium, and I am with Survivors of Torture International, appreciating and supporting Agenda Item Number 17. Without getting into any specifics, taking further steps to protect immigrants and especially torture survivors is very much appreciated. We definitely have seen clients in San Diego detained outside of immigration court, clients detained in the street, women in their 60s who've been receiving services in our offices are now inside O'Teen Mesa Detention Center, and we know that clients have disappeared from our services, and we're not sure where they are. Sometimes that's out of fear, and sometimes it's out of maybe even unidentified ICE imposters. We don't know. People are gone. So I appreciate you taking the steps to help protect San Diegans, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board. My name is Jesse Schmitty, State Policy Manager for Alliance San Diego. We are in strong support of item 17 and would urgently request your yes vote. We also encourage reverting back to the earlier language as reflected in previous comments. Everyone deserves the right to feel safe when they access county services. We have seen an appalling increase in attacks on our immigrant communities in San Diego under the Trump administration. Violent attacks by federal agents and those acting as agents has created an overwhelming state of fear and mistrust throughout this community. We have seen the modern-day terror that this administration has unleashed, from Gestapo agents kidnapping our aunts, uncles, mothers, and fathers, refusing congressional oversight just yesterday to our duly-elected representatives. This is not normal, and this is not our community. Recent data shows that three times as many San Diegans were arrested by ICE from January to July than all of 2024. This data shows that there is a seven-year-fold increase of individuals being arrested who have no criminal charges. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Patricia Mondragon, Alliance San Diego. In December of 2024, this Board took an important step by passing Policy L2, which restricts the use of county resources for immigration enforcement without a judicial warrant. That was a strong start toward protecting the rights of our residents, but there is still more we can do and must do to safeguard our communities from unlawful and rogue immigration enforcement actions that continue to violate the rights and due process of individuals, regardless of their immigration status. Our residents deserve to live free from fear, knowing their local government stands firmly for fairness, dignity, and the rule of law. Yesterday, the City of San Diego approved the Due Process Safety Ordinance by a unanimous 9-0 vote. I urge the county to draft and pass a similar county ordinance that includes reporting and privacy. Please vote yes in support of an ordinance that sends a clear message that San Diego stands for rights, dignity, and due process for all.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Pedro Rios, Ian Cerwelo, and Caroline Thessard.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Regoza. I am for this agenda item. I heard Supervisor Desmond talk about community and safety earlier, about keeping San Diego a place we can all call home. But I do have to ask, when you say "we," who do you exactly mean? Because for people who look like me, it does not feel like home when ISIS is prowling our neighborhoods. ISIS isn't protecting anyone. They're terrorizing our communities. They're picking up anyone who looks like a suspect to them. No warrant, no proof, no due process, citizen or not, as long as they fit the description, just based off of our skin color. People are getting detained because of ISIS racist agenda, their need to meet a damn quota, not because we have done anything wrong. That's not safety, that's oppression. It says that our... Excuse me. The Clear Ordinance is common sense. It says our county buildings are places of trust, not traps for ICE to abuse their powers. Stop enabling a system that criminalizes people for the color of their skin because safety does not just belong to those who look like you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, good afternoon to everyone. I am Ian M. Cerwelo. I'm the chairperson of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium. I come before you today to register our strong support for this initiative. It is imperative, more than ever, to show to our immigrant and refugee communities that their local government is not part of this illegal mass deportation campaign of this administration. It is important to remember that the aims of the federal government, on one hand, and the county of San Diego, on the other, are not aligned on this issue. In fact, they are competing and opposing aims. The federal government aims to detain and deport as many individuals as they can at all costs, including violating people's civil liberties with regard to human cost and the impact to our communities. The aim of ICE and the HS is to reach their daily quota. On the other hand, the county of San Diego aims for a safe, peaceful, and vibrant community, a community that trusts local enforcement and local government. So you should vote.
Thank you. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Shaheed Price, Lilia Zamora, Luz Godina. Also invite Youssef Miller, Chris Oforo Gomez. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Luz Godina. I am a native San Diego County resident. I support due process. Since I was born here and am a U.S. citizen, I was never afraid to walk around my community and go about my business around town. But now with what's going on with ICE and their kidnapping of people, it is very important that due process be followed. I'm a retired government employee. I worked over 30 years, and I am well aware that procedures need to be followed, and due process is one of those procedures that needs to be followed all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Oforo Gomez, and I'm an organizer with the San Diego Imperial County Labor Council. We represent 130 unions and over 200,000 working families across this region. Workers, your constituents, have been experiencing the terror of ICE firsthand through workplace raids, public intimidation, and seeing families being torn apart. While this ordinance aims to protect our immigrant communities, who have been the target of this violence, it's also important to protect speech, statuses, and identities that this administration has already stated its plans to persecute. In this moment, it's incredibly important that local government do everything in its power to confirm and enshrine that public institutions are here to protect your communities, not target them. We urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, Supervisors del Condado.
Good morning, Supervisors of the County.
Mi nombre es Lilia Zamora. Soy miembro de San Diego Organizando Proyectos y vivo en el Distrito Cinco.
My name is Lilia Zamora, and I'm a member of our organizer projects of San Diego. I live in District Number Five.
Les pido que por favor votencía la ordenanza de las reglas de responsabilidad y cumplimiento de las libertades civiles.
I would like you to please vote yes, and this is for the order of rules and responsibilities and the enforcement of civil rights.
Yo soy una ciudadana americana y soy madre de familia, y como madre luchamos tanto para mantener juntos a nuestra familia.
I am an American citizen, and I'm also a family mother. And like any mother, we really fight very hard in order to keep our family together.
Escucho que dicen que los inmigrantes vengan en el right way. ¿Cuál es? Este camino es muy difícil. En primera, ese camino no es para muchos. Para otros, la espera es de 20 a 30 años. En mi caso, ese camino casi me cuesta la vida para obtener mis documentos.
So this is what I hear about the immigrants, that they need to come here the right way. However, that way is very, very difficult, and that way that you're talking about is not for a lot of us. For some of us, it's 20 to 30 years of waiting, and that going that way almost cost me my life until I was able to get my documentation.
Soy una sobreviviente de un asalto y secuestro. En ese tiempo yo no tenía un estatus legal y eso me hacía sentir sin salida. Yo sabía que tenía solo dos caminos.
Okay. I'm also a survivor of, you know, kidnapping and also, you know, assault. And back then, I didn't have any type of legal status, and, you know, I felt that I had no way out.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Marta Flores, Jesús Gallegos, and David J.
Good afternoon. My name is Youssef Miller. With the North County Equity and Justice Coalition, I support this item. Strengthening this item and strengthening the due process helps us all. Even as we strengthen the most vulnerable, it lifts all of us up. There is also ways that they can attack you, and you, and you, and me, and people in this office if we do not strengthen due process. All the items that are under attack in this nation of freedoms that are under attack, these are all subject to destruction if we don't stand up. And this is one of the ways we can show and prove that we stand with our immigrant population and our neighbors. Because not only do people who are immigrant suffer from these things, we have Americans who are suffering from the lack of due process, and if it impacts one American, it impacts all of us, even with the attacks on our immigrant brothers and sisters who we support. So this strengthens and protects all of us, and look at it from a perspective that it's a right for everyone on this soil.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Marta Flores, and I belong to District Paloma Guire. I'm a member of Our Lady Guadalupe Church in Barrio Logan, and a member of SDOP, San Diego Organizing Project. I'm going to paraphrase Saint Teresa of Avila, who has such wisdom in saying that Christ has no body, doesn't have a body on this earth today, and the eyes and the...
The data shows that there is a seven-yearfold increase of individuals being arrested who have no criminal charges. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Patricia Bondragon, Alliance San Diego. In December of 2024, this board took an important step by passing policy L2, which restricts the use of county resources for immigration enforcement without a judicial warrant. That was a strong start toward protecting the rights of our residents, but there is still more we can do and must do to safeguard our communities from unlawful and rogue immigration enforcement actions that continue to violate the rights and due process of individuals, regardless of their immigration status. Our residents deserve to live free from fear, knowing their local government stands firmly for fairness, dignity, and the rule of law. Yesterday, the City of San Diego approved the Due Process Safety Ordinance by a unanimous 9-0 vote. I urge the county to draft and pass a similar county ordinance that includes reporting and privacy. Please vote yes in support of an ordinance that sends a clear message that San Diego stands for rights, dignity, and due process for all.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Pedro Rios, Ian Ceruello, and Caroline Thesard.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Regosa. I am for this agenda item. I heard Supervisor Desmond talk about community and safety earlier, about keeping San Diego a place we can all call home. But I do have to ask, when you say "we," who do you exactly mean? Because for people who look like me, it does not feel like home when ICE is prowling our neighborhoods. ICE isn't protecting anyone. They're terrorizing our communities. They're picking up anyone who looks like a suspect to them. No warrant, no proof, no due process citizen or not, as long as they fit the description, just based off of our skin color. People are getting detained because of ICE's racist agenda. They're need to meet a damn quota, not because we have done anything wrong. That's not safety, that's oppression. It says that our -- excuse me. The clear ordinance is common sense. It says our county buildings are places of trust, not traps for ICE to abuse their powers. Stop enabling a system that criminalizes people for their color of their skin, because safety does not just belong to those who look like you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, good afternoon to everyone. I am Ian M. Ceruello. I'm the chairperson of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium. I come before you today to register our strong support for this initiative. It is imperative, more than ever, to show to our immigrant and refugee communities that their local government is not part of this illegal mass deportation campaign of this administration. It is important to remember that the aims of the federal government, on one hand, and the County of San Diego on the other, are not aligned on this issue. In fact, they are competing and opposing aims. The federal government aims to detain and deport as many individuals as they can at all costs, including violating people's civil liberties with regard to human cost and the impact to our communities. The aim of ICE and the HHS is to reach their daily quota. On the other hand, the County of San Diego aims for a safe, peaceful, and vibrant community, a community that trusts local enforcement and local government. So you should vote.
Thank you. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Shaheed Price, Lilia Zamora, Luz Godina. Also invite Yusef Miller, Chris Oforo Gomez. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Luz Godina. I am a native San Diego County resident. I support due process. Since I was born here and am a U.S. citizen, I was never afraid to walk around my community and go about my business around town. But now with what's going on with ICE and their kidnapping of people, it is very important that due process be followed. I'm a retired government employee. I worked over 30 years, and I am well aware that procedures need to be followed. And due process is one of those procedures that needs to be followed all time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Oforo Gomez, and I'm an organizer with the San Diego and Imperial Counties Labor Council. We represent 130 unions and over 200,000 working families across this region. Workers, your constituents, have been experiencing the terror of ICE firsthand through workplace raids, public intimidation, and seeing families being torn apart. While this ordinance aims to protect our immigrant communities, who have been the target of this violence, it's also important to protect speech, statuses, and identities that this administration has already stated its plans to persecute. In this moment, it's incredibly important that local government do everything in its power to confirm and enshrine that public institutions are here to protect your communities, not target them. We urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, Supervisors del Condado.
Good morning, Supervisors of the County.
Mi nombre es Lilia Zamora. Soy miembro de San Diego organizando proyectos y vivo en el Distrito Cinco.
My name is Lilia Zamora, and I'm a member of our organizer projects of San Diego. I live in District Number Five.
Les pido que por favor votencía la ordenanza de las reglas de responsabilidad y cumplimiento de las libertades civiles.
I would like you to please vote yes, and this is for the order of rules and responsibilities and the enforcement of civil rights.
Yo soy una ciudadana americana y soy madre de familia, y como madre luchamos tanto para mantener juntos a nuestra familia.
I am an American citizen, and I'm also a family mother. And like any mother, we really fight very hard in order to keep our family together.
Escucho que dicen que los inmigrantes vengan en el right way. ¿Cuál es? Este camino es muy difícil. En primera, ese camino no es para muchos. Para otros, la espera es de 20 a 30 años. En mi caso, ese camino casi me cuesta la vida para obtener mis documentos.
So this is what I hear about the immigrants, that they need to come here the right way. However, that way is very, very difficult. And that way that you're talking about is not for a lot of us. For some of us, it's 20 to 30 years of waiting, and that going that way almost cost me my life until I was able to get my documentation.
Soy un asobrimiente de un asalto y secuestro. En ese tiempo yo no tenía un estatus legal y eso me hacía sentir sin salida. Yo sabía que tenía solo dos caminos.
Okay. I'm also a survivor of, you know, kidnapping and also, you know, assault. And back then, I didn't have any type of legal status. And, you know, I felt that I had no way out.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Marta Flores, Jesús Gallegos, and David J.
Good afternoon. My name is Yusef Miller. With the North County Equity and Justice Coalition, I support this item. Strengthening this item and strengthening the due process helps us all. Even as we strengthen the most vulnerable, it lifts all of us up. There is also ways that they can attack you, and you, and you, and me, and people in this office if we do not strengthen due process. All the items that are under attack in this nation of freedoms that are under attack, these are all subject to destruction if we don't stand up. And this is one of the ways we can show and prove that we stand with our immigrant population and our neighbors. Because not only do people who are immigrant suffer from these things, we have Americans who are suffering from the lack of due process. And if it impacts one American, it impacts all of us, even with the attacks on our immigrant brothers and sisters who we support. So this strengthens and protects all of us, and look at it from a perspective that it's a right for everyone on this soil.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Marta Flores, and I belong to District Paloma Guerra. I'm a member of Our Lady Guadalupe Church in Barrio Logan and a member of SDOP, San Diego Organizing Project. I'm going to paraphrase Saint Teresa of Avila, who has such wisdom in saying that Christ has no body, doesn't have a body on this earth today, and the eyes and the feet of Christ. We are called to be whatever the greater power you believe in. We are called to show compassion, respect, and dignity for all. And that's what I'm requesting you to do today. Vote yes on 17 so you will be able to assure us in the community that dignity, respect, and due process that we are all entitled to, because we are all human beings and children of God. Thank you, and vote yes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jesús Martin Gallegos Muñoz. I am a resident of District One, Community Organizing Coordinator with the Chicano Federation of San Diego County, and a member of the Community Budget Alliance. We are in strong support of the county creating a Civil Liberties Enforcement and Accountability Rules Ordinance and urge the Board of Supervisors to vote yes. Countywide, our community members have experienced appalling attacks from the Trump administration. Violent attacks by federal agents and those acting as agents has created an overwhelming state of fear and mistrust. It is critical that the county stands with all vulnerable communities and works to protect them from harm. On behalf of the Chicano Federation and the Community Budget Alliance, I urge you all to vote yes. Gracias.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is David J. As a board member of the San Diego Organizing Project and a resident of District Four, I speak in favor of the ordinance, because anytime we have a chance to act for justice, due process, and the safety of our neighbors, we have to do it. Too many of our neighbors feel unsafe participating in even the most basic activities at this point. I recognize that the county only has so much authority to protect our residents from the intentional, targeted harm inflicted by federal authorities, but taking steps towards safety is better than standing still. I recognize that taking a principled moral stand may put the county in the administration's crosshairs, but it's become more and more clear that anyone is at risk of that at any time. And ultimately, I recognize that all of us have the responsibility to demand basic due process and to stand up in the face of the worst authoritarian tendencies. So I encourage you all to stand on the right side of this issue and pass the measure, and I thank you, Chair, for bringing it forward.
Thank you. I'd like to do a final call for the speakers previously called. Jennifer Roysen, Jay Roysen, Pedro Rios, Belinda Long, Kristin Carriga, Caroline Thesard. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone, and we will begin with
Many ICE actions are clearly unconstitutional, oppressive, and some have been challenged in court and ruled illegal. But this demonstrates that there are already laws against such actions. The board letter even says, "The existing laws are clear." The board letter, however, is not. It calls for an ordinance based on judicial authorization, which clarifies the existing rules. Public awareness, clear multilingual signage will be posted at county facilities so residents understand their rights. Director accountability, contractors' guarantees or grantees and leaseholders must uphold these same protections. But the language isn't real clear. In fact, we just heard that the clear ordinance is not that clear or transparent.
We'll hear from the next caller.
Follow here. So let's see. Many ICE actions have already been challenged, have been challenged in court and ruled unconstitutional or illegal. And so the existing laws are already clear, and I'm not sure why, even the board's own letter says it, like Paul just mentioned, and they acknowledge that. So why do we need this? It's obvious that this measure is less about protecting rights and more about creating division, justifying wasteful spending of taxpayer dollars, and staging, like staging nonsensical protests, and just all designed to keep the people fighting each other instead of putting the magnifying glass on those who are truly creating the chaos in our communities. So wake up, pay attention, and yeah.
We'll hear from the next caller.
My name is Noah Yiyik. I'm a researcher and policy advocate with the Center on Policy Initiatives and a convenor of the Community Budget Alliance. Right now, too many San Diegans live in fear, fear of going to work, taking their kids to school, or walking into a county building. When people believe that immigration agents can access county buildings or data without clear limits, workers don't report abuse, families skip doctor appointments, and residents avoid libraries and parks. That fear rips apart the fabric of our communities and makes everyone less safe. It is critical that the county stands with all vulnerable communities and works to protect them from harm. Today, you have the chance to take the first step toward restoring trust and protecting San Diegans. The county should adopt an ordinance that ensures county facilities, resources, and personnel are never used to enable unlawful or discriminatory actions by immigration authorities. We ask the CIO, consult community advocates, and integrate their feedback to ensure that the clear ordinance is as comprehensive and effective as possible. Please vote yes and take the first step in creating an ordinance to protect the people you represent, send a clear message that San Diego stands for rights, dignity, and due process.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
They've admitted this item is a copy-paste job. The county buildings allegedly being a safe, welcoming place rooted in trust is already a BS premise. How can one violate process by entering illegally and then hypocritically demand process is followed? If ICE messes up, American citizens have the right to due process. Illegals do not. Why aren't you guys worried about the rogue criminals that entered our country illegally pretending to be an officer? County property is not private property. It's public, which means ICE can and should enter whenever necessary. If anyone on this board entered the country illegally, ICE should arrest them. Confusion and fear persist because the rules of who gets entry into this country were not consistently clear or enforced under Biden. Note the unclear ordinance. It doesn't matter if the three wannabe queens are paid activist whines. The federal government is going to keep getting the worst criminals off the streets, whether or not some privileged slave masters want to keep their foreign slave labor. No one can claim to be pro-labor and then support the exploitation of workers. That is the real kidnapping, racism, and terrorism. And I'm glad Blomo went back home de la mesa, not IB.
Now hear from the next caller.
Running for the fourth Board of Supervisors, because our Board of Supervisors do not care about due process. Let me go on and explain something for you. Federal Law 8, USC Subsection 1373 says immigration enforcement. Trump's local gestures, you're just playing fucking games trying to divide us. That's all you're doing. On top of that, let's talk about due process. At the same time, you are trying to silence me. You fired me, filed a restraining order, and looking for ways to throw me in jail, all because I would like you to do an investigation on voter fraud happening at homeless facilities. You want to go ahead and cover that up to go ahead and help your political people and try to commit, what, you just want division so that nothing gets done? Here's the deal. Go ahead and do this. Put a target on your head. Make my job easier getting you thrown in jail. I appreciate everything you're doing.
We'll hear from the next caller.
My name is Kriena Q. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm speaking in support of this item on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. San Diego has seen an appalling increase in immigration enforcement under this current administration. The violent and unlawful attacks upon our communities are creating an environment of fear and mistrust. Our communities are living their lives in terror. Immigrants, trans folks, people of color, and so many other folks are scared, just for how they appear, how they sound, they are perceived. People are being targeted by the federal government and illegally taken, from their places of work, from their homes, from places where they have the right to feel safe. You, as local elected leaders, have a responsibility to take a stand and ensure that our local resources are not aiding in these atrocities. The San Diego LGBT Community Center asks that you act as bold leaders, as our San Diego City Council did yesterday afternoon, and ensure that our most vulnerable communities are protected from harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Supervisors, my name is Liliana Soriano. Pronouns she/her. I'm the Director of Policy at YouthWell. We're an organization advocating for young people across San Diego. Today, I'm representing them, the youth from all over the county, who will not stand by the violence happening to our immigrant communities here in San Diego. Every person and family deserves to feel protected. Please vote yes on this ordinance, as it's a critical step toward ensuring that youth, families, and your constituents feel safe before the federal government and their actions continue to cause irreparable harm. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Vasquez, I'm an attorney at the ECLU of San Diego and Imperial Counties. We support the county drafting the Clear Ordinance, which aims to increase local protections to San Diego County residents. This ordinance sends a clear message to all San Diegans: You deserve to feel safe in your county. This ordinance furthers the county's effort to ensure that county facilities are open to all people so they can feel safe, welcome, and free of oppression. We support the components proposed for the drafting of this ordinance, including requiring a judicial warrant for immigration officials to access county property and posting signage with information about people's rights, as well as ensuring contractors are held to the same standards. Nationwide, we are witnessing increased targeting of immigrants and people of color, traumatizing our community. The County of San Diego has the responsibility in ensuring the civil rights and liberties of all of its residents. This proposed ordinance takes a critical approach to increase local protections for San Diego families. Please vote in favor of drafting this ordinance.
Thank you. Hear from the next speaker.
Supervisors, my name is Felicia Gomez, and I'm the Campaign Director at the California Immigrant Policy Center. I'm also a lifelong District Five resident. I strongly support the Board of Supervisors directing the CIO to draft the Civil Liberties Enforcement and Accountability Rules Clear Ordinance. I also urge you to prioritize working with advocates and community members to inform the language of the final ordinance to ensure community voices are heard and that this policy is as strong as it can be. This ordinance is important, because when any member of our community does not feel safe to leave their home for fear of potentially being detained or deported, it has harmful impact on the entire community. It results in children missing school, people canceling their health appointments, less support for local businesses, and decreased use of public spaces and programs that are meant to provide support to our communities. This important local policy seeks to protect due process, uphold civil rights, and ensure every San Diegan can safely access county spaces. Everyone deserves due process and to have their civil rights upheld regardless of their immigration status. The San Diego County Board of Supervisors has the responsibility--
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
My pronouns are she/her. I am speaking fervently in support of this ordinance. I applaud you for having the courage to bring it to the Board of Supervisors. I heard the testimonies yesterday. It just breaks my heart that the people that actually are doing the division in our communities are the federal law enforcement. That's where the division is coming from. We need to be taking care of each other, and I just really ask you to go ahead and pass this and to continue this direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Board of Supervisor, my name is Rahmo Abdí, Director of Organizing and Campaign, with partner the Partnership for Advancement of New Americans, and proud resident of District Four. Everyone deserves the right to feel safe when they're accessing county services. San Diegans fear going to work, taking their kids to school, and going about their daily lives. When workers believe that police or ICE access county buildings or data with little limits, they don't report unsafe conditions. Families skip medical appointments and community meetings. No one should be scared to ask for help or attending community meetings. Everyone should feel safe, no matter what, or where they came from, or what language they speak. Please also make sure you add that every time task force or sheriff, deputy work with federal immigration, agents be reported. Please yes vote on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller.
For Tennessean, I'm the Civic Engagement Organizer at the Line San Diego. When it comes to due process, we can't just say or pass ordinances. We must actually show up with our actions and enforce them. Hard-working people and families shouldn't be afraid of taking their loved ones outside, going to the store, church, dinner, school, and even community events. People shouldn't be forced to live in silence. As we can see, there's plenty of people being arrested who don't have any charges against them, being arrested for simply being a different skin color or speaking another language that's not English or European descent. Because when it comes to enforcement around the country, they're not doing anything to the hundreds of thousands of undocumented people from Europe. History is repeating itself, just like the colonizers erased so many enslaved African history. Board members, please vote yes on this ordinance to protect the people you represent. This is a clear message. San Diego stands up for people's rights, livelihood, and due process for everyone. It's an opportunity in improving public trust and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. So just let me say a couple of things. First of all, thank you to everyone who showed up in support. I also really want to thank Councilmember Shani La Rivera, who recently championed something quite similar at San Diego City Hall. The real purpose of this is to come together, to stand up for constitutional rights and due process in our community. In my view, that is a fundamental right of our country. It's a fundamental value that our country stands for, the basic principle that you're innocent until proven guilty, that you can't just be rounded up and locked up without adequate due process. And in response to a lot of very troubling recent incidents of identified federal agents detaining residents without warrants--
Is your mic on?
The mic is on, sir.
I just can't hear you very well.
Maybe, let me turn it off, and maybe it'll turn back on.
That's better.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So in response to a number of recent incidences of unidentified federal agents who've detained San Diego County residents without warrants, our county has the possibility, and in fact the necessity, of drawing firm boundaries in our community to ensure transparency, accountability, and respect for the Constitution. That's why I brought this item forward today and would respectfully request the support of my colleagues. With that, I'd like to make a motion. Supervisor Giri?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue. I think it truly is building on the momentum that we've seen regionally with the ordinance passed unanimously yesterday at the San Diego City Council. I'm proud to stand beside you and all of our colleagues doing this work together. I think that with this ordinance, we draw a firm line that county facilities must always be places of safety, not fear. Nowhere is this work more important than in District One, home to border communities like Otay Mesa, San Isidro, Nesto Barrio Logan, Sherman Heights, Chulavista, and Spring Valley. These are all communities in my district that have felt the direct impact of ICE operations and immigration enforcement. For many families, a county office is the first place they seek help. They deserve to know that when stepping into one of those offices, they will never put their safety, privacy, or family unity at risk. This ordinance ensures that when a mother takes her child to a clinic, when a worker files a wage theft claim, or when a family seeks help from a county, they're treated with dignity and respect, free from intimidation or separation. This is what standing up for due process looks like. intimidation or separation. This is what standing up for due process looks like, turning our values into enforceable protections. Chair, I look forward to working closely with you on this initiative to strengthen county protections and making sure our communities most directly impacted by ICE and immigration enforcement are at the center of this effort. I think we need to send a very clear message that we stand with our immigrant families and not against them, and that every person, regardless of status, deserves equal protection and dignity under the law. With that, I am happy to second your motion, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. No one likes seeing these immigration raids, not in your schools, not in neighborhoods, not in our communities. But we have to be honest, this didn't just automatically happen. It wasn't by accident. We wouldn't be here if we hadn't had millions of people entering our country unvetted for years under the last administration. These people weren't vetted, and I don't think most of them meant us harm at all, but there's some that did. And so we have to make sure that those people aren't allowed to stay here in this country. The pendulum swung too far to the left by letting all these people in unvetted, and now it's swinging the other way to the right. I think it's primarily because of the sanctuary state laws. Law enforcement is blocked. Local law enforcement is blocked from working with federal immigration authorities, and that's a dangerous combination. When local law enforcement can't work with ICE, ICE simply can't, and they just can't simply pick up the phone and say, hey, we've got a criminal in our custody, and hand them over to ICE. But ICE isn't able to do that, and local law enforcement can't work with ICE. ICE has to track that person down in the communities. That's what they have to do. This means raids in neighborhoods, it means families near schools feel unsafe, and it means a higher risk to the officers, actually, and the public. This doesn't have to be. If our law enforcement agencies could work together, we wouldn't have, ICE wouldn't have to go into neighborhoods and other areas. This is a policy failure, not a law enforcement failure. We've tied the hands of our officers and then blamed them for the mess created in Sacramento and Washington. Instead of making it easier to protect our communities, California's sanctuary state law policy makes it harder for law enforcement agencies to work together. And now some even want to make it first, worse, by further restricting law enforcement. If we want to prevent raids, and we want to protect families, and we want to protect and restore order, we must allow law enforcement agencies to work together. We aren't doing that. That's why you see the federal government coming in here and enforcing these laws. If local law enforcement could do it, and we could work together with them, we could, people could be handed over in jails or while they're in custody. But we don't. So we have the federal government coming in and doing it. As far as is today's item, I think the ordinance is unnecessary. We in the county do not need to clarify federal law. We need cooperation and coordination between our law enforcement agencies to make sure the people that are criminals get out, and the other ones are allowed to stay. This item perpetuates fear and is unnecessary, and for those reasons, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question on the author. Is it your intent to propose this new ordinance to add or change new requirements or restrictions for the federal law enforcement agents when operating on county facilities? So are you looking to change or the requirements or the restrictions on federal agents while operating on county property? Is that the goal in the intent of this ordinance?
Right now, we have a county practice that is not codified in board policy that requires federal agents to produce a judicial warrant in order to arrest somebody or even to do a search. That is a policy, sorry, that is a practice but not a board policy. So the purpose of this is to ensure consistency and to make sure that that is a board policy and not a practice. The second thing that this does is that extends that policy to include county facilities that are not actually operated by the county, that are on county-owned land and are leasures but are not operated by county operations. Sure. Was that an accurate description? Thank you. Other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
As a reminder, we'll do voice votes since we have a supervisor participating remotely. Supervisor Anderson?
No.
Supervisor Desmond?
No.
Chair Pro-Tamagiri?
Yes.
Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp?
Yes.
And Chair Lawson Reimer?
Yes.
The motion passes with Supervisors Anderson and Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you very much for your quiet twinkling and participation instead of clapping. Very appreciated. Okay, moving on to number item 18, we will begin again with public comment, and then we will have an opportunity for board discussion.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 26 requests to speak on this item, 15 in person and 11 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record, for item 18, we received 278 ecomments, 258 of those in support, and 10 in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 18 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Again, because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I will ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Belinda Long, Jamie Howell, and allegedly Audra. If I've called your name, please come forward.
So once again, my name is Jamie Howell. I work with SDOP. We urge the board to support item 18. We need to hold the bad actors and fake law enforcement officers accountable. There's a difference between a real law enforcement officer, such as some of the ones behind me, and the ones that are pretending to do their jobs. That's different. We're saying by supporting this item that what we're going to do is hold these bounty hunters that do not know California law, that do not know our penal codes, accountable. So I urge you all to vote yes on item 18.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers. Vanessa Regoza, Mark, Kristin Carriga?
Mark, yeah, I'm completely for this. Obviously, you don't want impersonating people, impersonating officers and kidnapping people. Unfortunately, as straightforward as this sounds, I'm actually not sure that you guys won't screw it up somehow. I mean, you couldn't even make sure that the richest person in China, Jack Ma, couldn't buy a ton of land or houses here. You could have amended Jim's proposal or done something to help. You didn't seem to care about that at all. You're just talking about BlackRock or something. It's absurd. You know how rich some people are? So unfortunately, even though, yeah, I totally support this, it's a great idea, but I actually can imagine you guys screwing it up, fucking it up. You can do it. I know you can. So I don't know how. I mean, it looks pretty straightforward. Who could screw this up? Well, you could.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Regoza. The KKK has a new uniform, and every racist person trying to get rid of black and brown people not have access to it. They hide behind fake badges and unmarked cars, calling it law enforcement. History yet again is repeating itself. What's supposed to protect us is preying on us. They prey on women, children, and anyone with black or brown skin. We have no way of telling who a true ICE agent is or someone filled with hatred impersonating one. Supervisor Desmond and Anderson, you say you care about your constituents, but what you mean to say is you care only when it's convenient for you, when it looks good on camera, when it doesn't mean standing up for black and brown people being hurt in your own districts. You say that it's up to Sacramento, to Oakland, whatever, that it's their fault, but you voted for Trump. You did that. You created this mess, and we're here to clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite additional speakers. Jennifer Roysdin, Erin Suramoto-Grossi, Jay Roysdin, and Patricia Mondra.
Sad to see that you guys wouldn't fight for Americans the way that you're fighting for illegal immigrants. It's interesting. And it's interesting that we talk about, you know, counterfeit, you know, gear and different things, and even wearing masks, but you guys enforced mask-wearing during COVID, and nobody had a choice. So now you have a problem with people wearing it when people are doing that to cover their faces. They are, Monica, and you can sit there and have those looks all you want. But it's interesting to see who you guys side with, because you didn't care about Americans being forced to, you know, inject a bioweapon, to wear a mask, to stand six feet apart, all of the, you know, satanic ritual type of things that we're engaged in. But now all of a sudden, when it has to do with people that don't even belong here, you seem to care quite a bit.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Supervisors. Erin Suramoto-Grossi, Associate Director of the Lion San Diego. I just want to take a quick moment to say thank you for answering the call to leadership. I know that is not easy. You face a lot of hatred, but we're grateful to all of you, whether we agree with you all the time or not, for answering that call. Lion San Diego wants to thank Chair Lawson Reimer, chaired Chair Lawson Reimer, for bringing this item forward. We're in full support of the effort to protect San Diego families. There's a lot of fear in the community right now, and the last thing we need is impersonators creating more fear. Additionally, we welcome the county's support of Senator Alex Padilla's Visible Act, which requires federal law enforcement to fully identify themselves and prohibits masking. Our communities deserve accountability and transparency, which includes the ability to identify officers. We urge the board to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite additional speakers. Jesse Schmitty, Pedro Rios, and Ian Sorrello.
Good afternoon. Patricia Mondragón, Lion San Diego. Thank you Supervisor Lawson Reimer for bringing this forward. We've all seen the disturbing videos of masked officers refusing to identify themselves while forcefully detaining people in the streets, and some of us have witnessed this firsthand here in San Diego County. Our communities are living in fear not only of masked federal agents operating without accountability, but also of opportunists who exploit this climate to cause harm. Some of them do it for attention and clout. One TikToker uses claiming to be a former Los Angeles Sheriff's Sergeant, regularly appearing in full uniform during live streams, spreading misinformation that misleads and endangers at-risk communities. This kind of behavior erodes public trust and blurs the line between lawful authority and impersonation. No one in San Diego should have to question whether someone in uniform is acting legally or even who they are.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Jesse Schmitty, State Policy Manager for Lion San Diego, here before you again today. We are here today in strong support of item 18 because our communities deserve the right to know who is knocking on their door. We've seen it right here in San Diego County, a man in San Isidro defrauding over two dozen immigrants using fake DHS badges and counterfeit uniforms. This item is about restoring trust, safety, and sanity. It cracks down on the counterfeit suppliers who profit from fear, and it supports Senator Padilla's Visible Act, a common sense bill that says if you are going to be taking part in Trump's running afoul of the Constitution, the least you can do, show your face and your identification. This is not about, this is about protecting both our communities, who deserve not to have their authority undercut by frauds and fake uniforms. Our residents, especially immigrant families, workers, and women walking home at night deserve to know that when someone claims to represent the law, they actually know who they are, and they're not going to be a victim of kidnapping. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person, Clint Carney and Jesus Gallegos.
Hello, good afternoon once again. My name is Ian Sorrello. I'm the Chair of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium. We strongly support the efforts to stop those who terrorize our communities, including those who impersonate ICE and immigration agents. As white supremacy groups are emboldened by current rhetoric and racist policies of this administration, this measure is an important step to respond to incidents of ICE impersonations. I am also an immigration attorney, and I have seen arrests by masked agents of my clients who don't even show their identity documents. So it is an egregious situation, and this impersonation even makes it worse. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Supervisors. Clint Carney with San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium and Survivors of Torture International. I don't have to explain that our clients have described the exact situation that we see on the streets of San Diego and in the USA as the reasons that they ran from their home countries. Forced migration is a global pandemic, and our government is engaging in state-sponsored terrorism. We're no different than anybody else. I appreciate you bringing this item forward, and I look forward to prosecutions of the impersonators. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Jesus Martin Gallegos Muñoz, Community Organizing Coordinator with the Chicano Federation, resident of District One. On behalf of the Chicano Federation, we are in strong support of the county stopping ICE impersonators and counterfeit gear suppliers. From San Isidro to Oceanside, our community has been living in fear, unable to access county services, fearful of taking their children to school, and unable to access medical care because of this fear, fear of being kidnapped and unable to protect themselves from these unjust acts. The county has an ethical and moral obligation to protect the lives of San Diego residents, and on behalf of the Chicano Federation, I urge y'all to support item 18. Gracias.
Thank you. I'd like to do a final call for those previously called. Jennifer Roysdin, Jay Roysdin, Pedro Rios, Belinda Long, and Kristin Carriga. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone, and we will start with our first caller.
All the bold, ICE impersonators commit crimes. Third, the fraudsters ripping off seniors or predatory landlords or city officials who enact an illegal extortion and discriminatory act. Third, DUI drivers who get their license back seven times, or the many UPI defenders who are released early. In a mere two dozen impersonation incidents, serious, but should we panic? Are there not the laws against this? Most impersonations I hear about do not use law enforcement. I wonder how many people already have a uniform in the closet. During COVID, I was worried about masked people ripping me off, as Audra hinted at. Another half-baked idea, and I hope you don't ruin Halloween for all the people who wanted to boo for cop or iceman. Thanks. Oh, dumb idea.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Something's going on with your... Conzuelo, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, something's going on with your guys' phone situation today again. Anyways, so, yep, this is Conzuelo, and this is another slippery slope toward big government micromanaging what small businesses can and can't micromanaging what small businesses can and can't do. And, yeah, for this handful of isolated impersonation cases, we're now opening the door for broader control, more regulation, more surveillance, more power in the hands of a few. I mean, I don't get what the people aren't seeing here. Like, it's like, they point something out, and it's just like, oh, my God! They're trying to, you know, whatever. Okay, I'm not gonna even go there. Okay, so, yeah, the people who come in here supporting measures like this always miss the bigger picture, and we don't need government inserting itself deeper into our local economy or private lives under the guise of protection. So, yeah, more control, and that is not safety, people.
We'll now hear from the next caller.
Everyone should dress as ICE agents for Halloween, as it's what scares ghoulish vampires away. Anyone impersonating officer and authority should face prosecution. That means the three wannabe queens on the KKK board should be immediately arrested for impersonating representatives. Why does Tara seem to only care about rape when someone impersonates ICE specifically? Why not when they impersonate a deputy or a family member? Why doesn't Tara care about the cartel impersonating helpful coyotes who create traffic sex slaves? Does the Democratic Women's Caucus suggest that if ICE would just not wear masks like they did in 2020 and have cars on ICE logo, they would support immigration enforcement? Or is this all just another excuse to support an open border and for Tara to get more money to blow via more frivolous lawsuits against innocent businesses selling Halloween costumes? Let's be real, Alex Padilla and his indivisible act is indeed an act, when he's running for office, to join his cronies, Bonehead Bonta and DJ Kitty Glitter's number-one fan, Ricardo Lara. Talk about short-term goals, Monica, and violating the Constitution, Tara. Dress as ICE.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi. This is Michelle Coon. I am speaking in support of Tara of just being picked up, having no idea who's picking you up, and what this is about is just totally unacceptable. I, again, applaud you for protecting our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
From Alliance San Diego, this one is obvious. Stopping people from impersonating ICE agents or any type of law enforcement is a no-brainer. Anyone that downplays or is against this has no place being in public office. The fact that we see an increase in people impersonating not just ICE but other law enforcement is unacceptable. We see the results of what happens when people impersonate important and dignified positions. When a clown moves into a palace, he doesn't become a king. The palace becomes a circus. I urge the board members to be in favor of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Center and a member of the Community Budget Alliance. We are in strong support of Item 18. Thank you so much Supervisor Tara Lawson-Reimer for bringing this important motion up. Everyone deserves equal protection under the law while in the United States of America, and this motion makes sure to protect our tired, our poor, and our huddled masses yearning to breathe free. I want to remind the board that this is inscribed as a Statue of Liberty. It couldn't be more American. To touch on the bigger picture, the few people this does happen to is terrifying, even if it is a few, as the last commenter did say. A few people being kidnapped should be enough, especially when someone's impersonating a law enforcement officer. Why, when something happens to, let's say, a white male or white female, American society loses their mind? When it happens to a couple people of color, it's not a big deal. This should be a no-brainer. I encourage the board to vote yes to protect all of its residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from the final caller.
Gambler Hermes here. Once again, I'm gonna be running for the Fourth Board of Supervisors so that I could have equal airtime and finally get my answers answered. Oh, so, you're doing me two things. I'm gonna stop all the anarchists from buying the police gear to fight their cops? I support that. What gear are you planning on removing? Because I don't think that they're allowed to sell badges. I don't think they're allowed to do that. I think those are created at home. So what are you really stopping? Stopping someone from buying a jacket, pants? That's what you're doing? Okay. Doesn't really solve anything. And anyone who is afraid to go to services? It means they're illegal immigrant, and they should get their asses kicked out, hopefully forcibly. That's my opinion. What's yours? Wait until you hear. I know you don't want to listen to me, don't want to have anything. You would love to throw me in jail, but you've missed that opportunity.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson-Reimer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. This is my item, so I just want to say a couple words as introduction. It has come to our attention through a number of reported cases across the country that people have been posing as ICE agents, flashing fake badges. In January, a North Carolina man threatened to deport a woman if she did not have sex with him, showing her a fake ICE badge. In February, a New York man pretended to be an ICE agent, told a woman he needed to speak with her, and then sexually assaulted her. In June, a Maryland man flashed a fake badge, threatened to deport a woman if she did not enter his car, where he then sexually assaulted her. And when legitimate officers operate in secrecy, which is what's going on today with ICE raids in our community, it blurs the line between law enforcement and lawlessness, and it creates space for criminals to exploit our communities. It clearly should not be possible to buy fake federal ICE uniforms and badges that can then be used to break the law, kidnap, and assault people in our community. So the purpose of this item today is to give our county officials the tools, our legal tools, to shut down companies that are profiting from this deception, and to push for stronger transparency from our real federal agents so that this culture of fear can be closed. So I would love to invite my colleagues to join with me in stepping up to protect our residents, demand accountability, and support these efforts to make sure that officers are identified and criminals cannot impersonate those that are supposed to be federal law enforcement agents. And with that, I'd like to make a motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
And we have a second from Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree, there shouldn't be counterfeit law enforcement gear manufactured. But it's already illegal to impersonate a law enforcement officer. And I support anyone who is doing so to be prosecuted to the fullest extent to the law. As far, and so, I could be supportive of your Item 1 and your recommendations, but not with Item 2, if you care to bifurcate, otherwise I would be voting no on the entire item. But law enforcement should be able to utilize the best practices, including covering their faces. I don't like it either, but many of these law enforcement officers are being doxxed. Their families or houses are being threatened, and that shouldn't be the case for them doing their job. I think including covering their faces if deemed necessary for their safety and their privacy. There's been a significant increase in assaults against law enforcement officers in the past year, so they should be able to use protective measures necessary to protect themselves. So I can't, like I said, if you're willing to bifurcate, I could support Item 1, but not Item 2 on Item 18. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp.
I just want to say thank you to the Chair for bringing the last two items forward and for your work, along with Councilmember Elo Rivera, in gathering community members. I know a lot of community members have been doing this work, so I want to say thank you. In addition, thank you to community members for really bringing the historical perspective into this chamber. There's at least three items on this agenda that, if not for historical context, you know, there might be a different outcome or a different thought process around it. But everything that we're doing, especially right now, when we have a president whose slogan is "Make America Great Again," which means he wants to go back to the time when it was really legal to have people that were enslaved, working for privileged people in this country, and, you know, when people had to go to the back of the bus, and, you know, all of that, "Make America Great Again." That's why it's important to have historical context to the things that we're bringing forth or that are brought forth now, because these things have already been done in our country, they just looked a little bit different. They've been modernized and put before us, again, like putting lipstick on a pig. But at the end of the day, even when we talk about due process, the whole purpose is to take due process from as many Americans as possible. And the pretext is our immigrant community, as it has been black people, as it has been trans people, as it has been whoever. We could other first, take rights away from them, and then go through the process of getting closer to dictatorship in this country. So all that to say, thank you for bringing out the history. YouTube rabbit holes don't have it all. I think sometimes we need to pick up a book and read, and we will see that our history tells us the story that we need to know about our country, so that all of us, no matter what we look like, can come to that truth, and then we can work together to make this country what I think everybody, really, whether or not we agree on these issues, want it to be. So thank you very much again for your leadership, and I'm happy to support this item.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Aguirre.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Vice Chair, for your comments. I think they're very well put, in the sense of, if we don't learn from our history, how are we gonna move forward? So therefore, beware of those who try to erase history. So thank you for your comments. Chair, thank you for bringing this forward as well. This item goes to the heart of protecting our communities, especially immigrant families in District 1, who too often live in fear because they're being targeted or they're being deceived by people pretending to be law enforcement. As you mentioned, Chair, there's been way too many cases of people pretending to be ICE agents only to assault, especially women. As federal agencies like ICE blur the line between enforcement and intimidation, predators have become emboldened, and families can't tell who's real and who's pretending, and that uncertainty puts everyone at risk. So let me be clear, these impersonators are criminals. They prey on the most vulnerable, they exploit immigration fears, and erode faith in legitimate law enforcement from our local agencies. Immigrant families deserve to feel safe, seeking services, reporting crimes, or just walking down the street. So no one should live in fear that the person knocking on their door might be a predator just wearing a fake badge or fake gear. We've heard it too often. That's why I'm full support in pursuing seasoned assist orders, litigation, and enforcement against those who profit from selling fake law enforcement gear that puts our residents in danger. And I'm also in strong support of Senator Alex Padilla's Visible Act. This is all simple and common sense. Immigration officers must show visible identification and not conceal their identity behind masks. By supporting this item, San Diego County affirms that transparency and dignity are not optional but foundational to our public safety. So I'm happy to support that item. Again, Chair, thank you for bringing this item forward.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Anderson.
Madam Chair, I was excited to read this. There's no reason why you'd know this, but I actually wrote the state law that prohibits using badges in inappropriate unauthorized ways. You see, it wasn't ICE agents, it was county supervisors who were giving buddies badges. It was sheriffs and police giving badges out as gifts. And some of those folks, including electeds, sitting council members and mayors, who were flashing their badge as if it had legal authority other than their legislative purpose. So this bill, this state law prohibits the use of it and removes the badge from the individual. So I was very interested in this. So I Googled, and every case that's been mentioned today was fully prosecuted, and some of them are being prosecuted at this time. Nothing went unprosecuted. So I wasn't quite sure what this would actually, how it would be used, since law already prohibits it, and even those who fake it. And I think, you know, there are cases, but I don't know how you'd write this, that people using state IDs of any type, whether it's local or any kind of official ID, to bamboozle somebody in an inappropriate way, is problematic, but there's no law against that. So if I were to go someplace publicly and flash my county ID and said, "I'm a supervisor, I demand this service," or whatever, I can't, I shouldn't do it, but I don't believe there's any law against it. So you could intimidate somebody and ask, perhaps, for sexual favors or something like that, with it, to, I would see a purpose of perhaps going after that. But all this does is what's already prohibited in law. And it's not a big step to vote for it, because it doesn't do anything, unless it's gonna be used to go after people who sold the badge to the person who legally should have received it.
That's exactly what this does.
Yeah. And I can't support that, because that person, when you go to the DSA's store and you are authorized to purchase a badge or to purchase the equipment...
No, it's for folks who sell it to someone who is not authorized to purchase it. So if you sell, if you sell the equipment to someone who is not authorized to purchase it.
But my question, though, is, where's the liability? So I am authorized today to purchase that, then tomorrow I am not authorized, because I'm no longer with the sheriffs, or I'm no longer with whomever it may be. And my wife decides that we're gonna get rid of all the clutter in the garage, and my uniforms, along with my shoes and my tennis racket I haven't picked up, are all put up for sale in a garage sale, and someone purchases it. Would the DSA store be liable?
No. That's, no. You, that's, I mean, you can't make that kind of liability connection that is, I mean, we can turn to counsel, but that is clearly, like, impossible to do legally. You're liable for reasonably foreseeable...
If my ex-spouse sold my stuff, or my soon-to-be ex-spouse, would I then be liable?
I mean, I don't know, you got divorced, but, I don't know, I'm teasing you. But no, I mean, clearly, the intention here is that if there's an actor who sells equipment that enables someone to pose as an ICE agent, and that individual, upon the time of purchase, does not have authority and authorization to buy that equipment, that would be illegal and would be subject to seeking some kind of damages. If you sell the equipment to someone who, at the time, is allowed to purchase it, and then later that person has a garage sale, and somebody's nephew buys the ICE badge, that is not included in this legislation.
The action that you're saying is already prohibited by law.
It is, it's actually not. We can turn to counsel. He can talk, he can give a little bit more clarity.
I'd be interested in that, because if I go to the DSA store and I want to purchase something, they won't sell it to me.
Supervisor Anderson through the Chair. This applies more broadly than that, and it would apply to other institutions who are selling... and it would apply to other institutions who are selling uniforms and things like that. And those types of institutions are not covered by this. As it relates to the DSA store or something like, of that sort, they would, if they intentionally violated the law, then yes, that would be a problem and, and they would be subject potentially to the statute.
And let me just be clear, maybe...
Who would be the people that are selling badges?
Can I, can I clarify a distinction? This is a civil issue that we're, that what this proposes is, is us having, it's like the ability to have civil liability. What you're discussing is existing criminal. So, that, that might be the distinction that we're talking about, is that we're looking at us having civil liability tools, not only criminal liability tools.
Well, if somebody's extorting sexual favors or taking advantage of others, it should be criminal.
But didn't you just say it is?
It is.
Okay.
So, I feel it's covered. I am curious who those people would be that Mr. Smith is speaking of.
Supervisor Anderson, this law wouldn't, the individuals that misuse it, so if, if someone purchases it, uses it to commit a crime, they would be subject to existing criminal laws. This isn't targeting them. What this is targeting is individuals that would sell to those folks, sell the counterfeit material, make it available for them to engage in that illegal activity. And as the chair pointed out, it'd be civil action.
So, are we talking about, you know, my five-year-old neph, grandson has a badge that's tin and it says deputy on it, but you would have seen it in the Western in the seventies. So, it's not a real badge.
No.
It has no authority. It's just a costume.
Sir, yes Supervisor, that's correct. And, and I don't believe that's what this speaks to. What this speaks to is, is clothing, badges, things like that, that are specifically designed to deceive the public. So, I don't think anyone would, would think that your, your grandson's badge that he was using was designed to deceive the public. Conversely, if someone created a very realistic-looking ICE badge and an ICE uniform and ICE, other ICE-related paraphernalia and sold that for folks, folks to then impersonate very realistically an ICE officer, to do that conduct you talked about, that would be possible.
Sir, sir, please. Sir, please. I do, I want to say like, I want to clarify factually. One of the biggest challenges is not coming from authorized distributors who are kind of already playing, playing by the rules. A lot of the distributors, the very participatory gentleman in the audience has identified that you can buy it on Amazon for $6. So, I would appreciate us not shouting from the chamber, but in this case, that I think was actually in my board letter. So, thank you. Any additional comments? Okay. We have a motion and we have a second.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson.
Oh, no. But when he comes back, he may change my mind.
Supervisor Desmond.
No.
Chair Protamagiri.
Yes.
Vice Chair Montgomery-Steph.
Yes.
And Chair Lawson Reamer.
Yes.
The motion passes with Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. We now move on to item number 19, establishing the office of the Inspector General. Supervisor Montgomery-Steph, this is your item. Do you want to begin with public comment or do you want to begin with introductory comments?
I'll make some introductory comments and then we can move to public comment.
Okay.
That's okay? Okay. So, as we all know, the sheriff's office is responsible for providing public safety services to the community, including those who, who are incarcerated. And sheriff's deputies regularly make decisions affecting the community's safety. Sheriff's training policies and professional code of conduct dictate how deputies interact with community members. However, the ongoing attention and the numerous jail deaths and related lawsuits, sexual harassment allegations within the sheriff's office, and CLERB's investigations highlight that there are still improvements to be made. For example, this year, we have had nine jail deaths so far, matching our total from last year. Over the past decade, the county has paid more than $80 million in jail-related settlement payouts. Moreover, in looking solely at the sexual harassment and sexual misconduct lawsuits and pre-litigation claims against the sheriff's office personnel, the county has paid $13.5 million in settlements since the beginning of 2020. It is now more important than ever to ensure that this board and the sheriff maintain a long-term commitment to rebuilding trust in our justice system and sustain positive relationships between the community and law enforcement. To effectuate these changes, we must use different oversight tools that are available to use to ensure ongoing, continuous oversight of the sheriff's office. The creation of an office of inspector general would be another tool to ensure that public safety is achieved in a transparent, fair, and equitable manner. Therefore, I propose the establishment of the office of inspector general to monitor sheriff's office operations, the conditions of confinement in the county's custodial facilities, the provision of services to incarcerated individuals, and the sheriff's responses to complaints related to any of the above. The office of inspector general should also be empowered to review various aspects of the sheriff's office, including use of force patterns, internal investigations of force incidents, and allegations of misconduct, and the sheriff's disciplinary decisions. The office of inspector general should be vested with the authority to conduct its own audits and inspections or conduct an investigation either at the request of the board, at the request of CLERB, at the request of the sheriff, or on its own initiative. Based on its findings, the office of inspector general should make recommendations regarding disciplinary actions and sheriff's office policies. While I expect the office of inspector general to work collaboratively with CLERB, this offer, this, this office does differ from CLERB because it provides proactive oversight and can monitor the sheriff's office in real time. CLERB, with all the wonderful work that, that it does, and we did discuss CLERB and expand those, that jurisdiction in our last meeting, is meant to be reactive oversight model in which CLERB can only begin an investigation upon a citizen's complaint or an in-custody death. I think that was discussed at length at our last meeting. The office of inspector general, however, would have the ability to perform an investigation on its own initiative. Ultimately, we must use all of the tools available to us to ensure ongoing, continuous oversight and to rebuild trust in, in the justice system. Thank you. And that concludes my comments. I'll make a motion. I can make it now or on the other side and, and happy to answer any questions that my colleagues have. Thank you.
Thank you. Could, I would love to call up Sheriff Kelly Martinez to make some comments.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this proposed feasibility study, which would create and establish an office of inspector general with the authority to audit, review, and investigate the San Diego County Sheriff's Office policies, procedures, and operations. Recently, I came before your board when you imposed an ordinance that expanded the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board's jurisdiction to include oversight of jail medical staff, which includes contracted medical providers. I continue to stand firm on the principles of transparency and accountability. The unprecedented nature and unintended consequences of that item continue to cause me concern. We still do not know the costs and financial or operational impacts of that change. Supervisor Montgomery-Steph has said that she and I did not have conversations about a third-party administrator, which was my recommendation at that meeting. This is true, and that's because the meeting I had with her in advance of that hearing, she said she wasn't deviating from her board letter proposal and any conversation on my proposal was dead upon arrival. It was also in that meeting that the supervisor told me that she would like to have that conversation later because she would really love to know what my ideas are. Ironically, I stand before you today to publicly provide input on a proposal that the supervisor has put forward without any discussion with me or understanding from the people who have the experience, knowledge, and operational understanding of our agency, with her claim that this is the direction I wanted to go. I certainly have not had the opportunity weigh in on this significant change and was in fact blindsided when it was docketed. Let me be clear, this is not what I was asking for. It does not help achieve the real change we all want to see. It's never good policy or good governance to impose new policies, laws, or regulations without understanding the needs of an organization. Changes of this significance must include input from the people who will be most impacted. However, not only was I kept in the dark on this proposal, but the sheriff's office is not included as part of the feasibility study to shape the outcome. There's a shocking lack of interest by the author of the board letter to understand the sheriff's office operations. Despite invitations to her and her staff to tour any of our facilities and learn more about the communities that we serve, our community engagement activities, improved policing methods, public safety outcomes, better jails, and a focus on rehabilitation and treatment for the people in custody. I focused on the health and well-being of our staff, who are the target of this proposal. Without a healthy workforce that prioritizes reducing fatigue and managing compacted workloads, we face increased risk and adverse outcomes. Yet, we are seeing a theme of policy direction and legislative support to impose more layers of oversight, all without understanding our operations, goals, and plans for improvement. I have inherited litigation, facility infrastructure, and newly imposed legislative mandates that increase oversight, as well as the impacts of Prop 36 that have not yet been funded. We have record-low crime rates in San Diego sheriff's jurisdiction, reductions in violent crime, deputy-involved shootings, fewer in-custody deaths, and unprecedented hiring and retention of staff. None of these improvements are by accident. They happen because we have a plan, we work hard, we implement good policy, we work with county staff and with the board's support. In considering this board action, I want to walk you through and explain the current oversight and the regulatory authorities who audit, monitor, investigate, and ensure the sheriff's office has good policy and is held accountable to the communities we serve. To start with, if you can put the item on the board, please. This is the list of the different things. I'll articulate them. The Board of State and Community Corrections, which ensures facility compliance through inspections, training compliance through audits, and in custody, then there's an in-custody death administrator. The California Civil Rights Department, which was previously the California Department of Fair Employment and Housing, which investigates discrimination and harassment complaints. The California Department of Justice, the State Attorney General, which investigates all deputy-involved shootings of unarmed individuals. The California Occupational Safety and Health, or CAL-OSHA. California Public Employee Relations Board. The California State Auditor. The Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board. The Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, which focuses on standards and development division for training, delivery, and compliance audits. The Peace Officer Standards Accountability Division, which is the peace officer misconduct and reporting oversight and certification and decertification of deputy sheriffs and law enforcement officers. The DEA for jail pharmaceutical compliance. The Disability Rights of California. The FBI for federal crimes, civil rights violations, and investigations into police misconduct. The Medical and Mental Health Oversight, which is the California Board of Behavioral Sciences. The mental health providers, of our mental health providers. The California Board of Pharmacy, pharmacists and pharmacy technicians. The California Board of Psychology, which looks at our psychologists. The California Board of Registered Nurses for our registered nurses. California Board of Vocational Nursing and Psychiatric Technicians for our licensed vocational nurses. California Department of Public Health for our certified nursing assistants. The Medical Board of California for all of our physicians. The San Diego County DA's Office Special Operations Unit for Officer Involved Shooting Reviews and Criminal Prosecution for Neglect, Excessive Force, et cetera. The San Diego County Department of Environmental Health and Quality. The San Diego County Grand Jury, who does an annual detention facility inspections. They investigate and report, and conduct reports regarding any aspect of the sheriff's office or city or county government. The San Diego County Office of Audits and Advisory Services. The San Diego County of Office and Ethics and Compliance. The San Diego Police Department Homicide Unit, which investigates all deputy-involved shootings by sheriff's deputies. The Sheriff's Division of Inspection Services, which conducts internal audits and reviews of all of our policies. The Sheriff's Internal Affairs Unit, which conducts investigations into employee misconduct. The State Attorney General. The U.S. Attorney, Southern District of California for Officer Involved Shooting Reviews and Criminal Prosecution for Excessive Force. The U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division. The U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission for Discrimination and Harassment Complaint Investigations. In short, if this board moves forward to add an OIG to this long list of redundant oversight and regulations, you are voting to dismantle the hard work of our organization. The sheriff's office does not have any active consent decrees nor any active investigations by the State Attorney General. The state audit of our jails has no mention of an OIG concept. The 4,700 employees of the sheriff's office are dedicated to driving towards a collective vision of keeping San Diego and the communities we serve safe. In just the last few years, we've had new legislative mandates at the state level to create an oversight body for in-custody deaths. We've had unprecedented authority granted to expand our local oversight bodies' access to investigations. And this year, through AB 847, law enforcement oversight bodies now have additional access to confidential employee records as part of their investigations. All of these came with no resources or staffing to support law enforcement's role in following the law and accommodating such significant policy changes. Even though the item before you today is moving towards a feasibility study, it's supporting a proposal that I see as punitive, unnecessary, redundant, expensive, and an oversight body that's not necessary. Your support for this vote against the sheriff's office, the progress we've made, and the men and women who serve and sacrifice every day. I ask you to not move forward on this proposal of a feasibility study. And to build off where I started, I recommend we work in a collaborative way that supports the hard work and the progress we have already made. There's a lot of work still to be done and items like this send us backward. Our communities and our staff deserve better from this board. Thank you for your time and the ability to speak on this item.
Thank you. I have a, I'm going to have a couple of questions, but for the, but not now, after public comment, but I do have some questions for, for our sheriff. Thank you. So, we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 29 requests to speak on this item, 17 in-person and 12 requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received seven e-commerce, six of those in support, one in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 19 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Paloma Serna, Jamie Howell, and allegedly Audra. Again, you'll have one minute to address the board and please state your name for the audio record.
Whoever's using the name Audra, I love it. 25 different oversight bodies and we still have the same corruption going on, right Kelly? Because it's not the time or place to talk here about me being assaulted by one of your officers because it's definitely not the time or place. But it's interesting with these offices of inspector generals. They always come and they, you know, say we need to have policy changes. There's nobody really to enforce the things. The people that would enforce would be the attorney general, right? And instead of having them create some kind of committee, we have CLERB and we have all of these OIGs that are here and we're going to change the policies to make sure that we're enforcing the needs, things that need to be enforced. But that really doesn't happen, so it just allows more corruption to take place. So, it's interesting to see two corrupt entities sitting here going like, "We need accountability," when all of you guys are corrupt as fuck, Monica. Yeah.
Next speaker, please.
Jamie Howell. Supervisor Montgomery-Steph, thank you for bringing this legislation together. I understand the sheriff's point of view and how she feels at this point, but however, with, I don't care if it's one death, or if it's nine deaths, or if it's 90 deaths, at some point you have to say to yourself, "Okay, we have all these other organizations that are supposed to monitor the sheriff's department, but the question is, are they really doing their job?" And clearly, some of the federal organizations, I'm not sure if the sheriff is aware of this, but some of the federal organizations she just had on her list, they are no longer doing their job effectively. And that's why we're stepping in to do the job. So Supervisor Step, thank you again. And I urge all the board members to support this item.
Thank you. Before the next speaker begins, I'll call three additional speakers. Claudette Magno, Mark, and Jennifer Royden, followed by Aaron Suramoto-Grossi.
My name is Paloma Serna, the mother of Elisa Serna, who died in custody on November 11, 2019. I'm with Saving Lives in Custody California North County Equity and Justice Coalition. I stand in strong support of establishing an office of inspector general that is fully independent from the sheriff department. For, for, for too long, families like mine have watched internal oversight fail while people keep dying inside San Diego jail. An inspector general must have subpoena power, unrestricted access to medical and contract records, and the authority to audit deaths, a review of force, and monitor internal investigation, not just rely on what the sheriff provides. Because we are impacted family, are the impacted ones that Kelly Martinez mentioned, who you should get your information from. who you should get your information from. The OIG must report directly to the board supervisor, publish quarterly public reports on deaths and corrective action, and share findings with CLRB and with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Claudette Magno, and I'm a proud union member of SAIU Local 221. We understand the importance of this item, and we need the transparency and accountability. This proposal would change staffing and accountability processes that directly impact the floor staff, meaning both sworn and professional medical staff. And we know this is a new concept, and that the creation was delivered and includes all the sheriff employees. As staff, we also need more transparency and open communication, starting from the top with our command and our admin. So we are no longer left in the dark about decisions that directly impact the floor staff, both sworn and professional staff. We also need to do this in a way that, to make sure that the staff are not feeling pressured and are not being made scapegoats for the problems while providing optimal care and services. We are supportive and shining a light on institutional changes that are happening right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite forward three additional speakers: Patricia Mondragon, Jesse Schmitty, and Pedro Rios. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Supervisors, Aaron Suramoto-Grossi, Associate Director at Alliance San Diego. We'd like to thank Vice Chair Monica Montgomery Stepp for bringing this really critical item forward. Alliance San Diego is in strong support of establishing an office of the inspector general to help provide much-needed oversight, accountability, and transparency to the sheriff's department. San Diego County has one of the highest in custody jail death rates in the state, and this is simply unacceptable. The board has provided the sheriff ample opportunity to demonstrate accountability and transparency, and yet the sheriff has failed to do so in many respects, and the in-custody deaths continue. That is why establishing an independent office of the inspector general is critical. Community trust in law enforcement is dependent on accountability and transparency. We are in full support of this board letter and urge the supervisors to pass it. Thank you.
Patricia Mondragon, Alliance San Diego. We cannot continue to rely on police to police themselves while demanding transparency and accountability. This proposal is a very welcome step, especially now as the current Trump administration continues to dismantle federal oversight and accountability mechanisms. Our community wants and deserves independent oversight with the authority to act, not just observe. Establishing this office of inspector general sends a clear message that this board values the due process and human dignity of every San Diegan, including those in sheriff's custody. Recent incidents, like ICE agents accessing the sheriff's Sally Port to detain an immigrant, and HSI calling the sheriff's department to assist in a traffic stop that led to a collateral immigration arrest, show why we need true oversight and accountability. These are issues that must be investigated. Please support item 19 and make an independent oversight.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the board. Jesse Schmitty, State Policy Manager for Alliance San Diego, also speaking as the District Eight Commissioner for the Commission on Gang Prevention and Intervention at the City of San Diego. Here today in strong support of adding the office of inspector general. Thank you Supervisor Montgomery Stepp for bringing this much-needed reform forward. For years, San Diegans have watched as in-custody deaths, misconduct, and broken systems have gotten unchecked. Each one represents not just a failure of policy, but a failure of human dignity. San Diegans deserve independent oversight with the authority to act. We are tired of waking up to another San Diego Union Tribune story about an in-custody death. Establishing this office sends a message that this board values the due process and human dignity of every San Diegan, including our incarcerated brothers and sisters. It was just in August that the San Diego Union Tribune reported on the sheriff reporting on a fake oversight unit in Los Angeles. And that is why we have no trust. That trust has been broken, and we are demanding transparency today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite three additional speakers: Pedro Rios, Ian Sorrello, and Clint Carney.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ian Sorrello. I'm a resident of San Diego and a member of the Asia-Pacific American Labor Alliance, RA-PALA. Please support item 19 and create an office of the inspector general, an independent office to provide oversight of the sheriff's department as needed in light of what's happening right now and what has happened in the past. It is imperative that San Diegans and members of the community are able to trust that their law enforcement is held accountable and transparency exists to ensure that these deaths and these abuses are stopped. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'll invite the remaining speakers in person: Youssef Miller, Mike Odine, David J., and Ben Nazarian.
Hello again, Supervisors. Clint Carney with the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium and Survivors of Torture International. Appreciate you bringing this item forward. We are supportive. Increasing public trust is something that's going to help all of us, and it's something that we work on every day with our clients who have no trust in law enforcement from their home country. That's why they fled, and we really work with them hard to trust law enforcement here in San Diego. They go without food because they simply do not want to ride public transportation to encounter any law enforcement officer from any agency whatsoever. So we appreciate another layer of oversight and transparency.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mark, as far as I can see, this is just another way to give a big salary to your friends who have no real authority. So obviously, the only people who could really do anything about this would be the attorney general for the state, or Summer Stephan's office. It really should be someone from Stephan's office that could do something, because there's already 25 investigative authorities, which I have no faith in anyway, because Audra really was, the deputy did excessive force on her with videotaping. It was completely wrong. She had been arrested before, so you guys, the police had her fingerprints, her identity. Once she was in the hallway, all the officer had to do was let her go and write her a ticket. But there's video of this incredible excessive force, and you did nothing. Also, a friend who almost died in a hospital, a hospital, Nigel, of lithium toxicity, and they did nothing but lower the dose. I have no faith in these.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Ben Nazarian from the Deputy Sheriff's Association. This proposal of the office of the inspector was advanced without inclusion of the office it targets. The DSA has always stood behind accountability and transparency, but we also believe in doing work together, not imposing new layers of bureaucracy without understanding the needs of the organization. The board just expanded local oversight under CLRB, and those changes are still being implemented. To leap from that to office inspector general is not progress, it's overreach. When decisions are made by those who haven't stepped foot inside the jails, it will only make things worse. The sheriff's office has needs, its staffing and infrastructure. But instead of helping us meet those needs, the alternative is to create more bureaucracy. If the board truly wants to make reform, it's about partnership. Oversight without collaboration won't work. I urge you to reject this proposal and instead work with us towards the same goal we all share: safer communities, stronger accountability, and progress built on cooperation. Use the resources you plan to use for this and staff the jails and build the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hey, everybody. My name is Mike Odine. I'm the president of the Deputy Sheriff's Association. Let me start by saying that I believe the San Diego County Sheriff's Office, and I believe most people in this room would agree, is that we are already one of the most heavily regulated law enforcement agencies in the state, and proudly so. Every single of our, all of our operations are audited, reviewed, inspected by several independent oversight bodies, such as the list of the 25 that the sheriff mentioned. Our medical staff, medical health professionals, are overseen by licensing board, now CLRB. We support all of these issues. Our concern is that the creation of an office of inspector general, will they be held responsible for assisting the sheriff in addressing and correcting deficiencies in our jails? Mold on the walls, Vista Jail with modules that we can't put prisoners in, or inmates in, infrastructure that's 30, 40 years old. We need support. We need, we agree that oversight is necessary, but it's already in abundance. What we need is partnership, not politics, to keep building safe, accountable sheriff's office that our communities truly deserve. We respectfully request that you vote no on this item.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
As a resident of District Four, who grieves the sheriff's office's dreadful history of targeted overpolicing, its appalling in custody death rate, and her disdain for basic accountability, I am grateful to the vice chair for bringing this item forward, and as a board member of San Diego Organizing Project, I encourage you to vote yes on this item. For too long, our sheriff, her predecessor, and the department she runs have put our neighbors at increased risk and have cost the county millions of dollars in avoidable legal settlements. Her willful disregard of this board's action last December, her stonewalling of CLRB, and her disregard for the residents she is supposed to be protecting is unacceptable. Sheriff Martinez, you came to our community last year, or two years ago during your campaign asserting that your history in the department would allow you to lead a transformation. Instead, you've continued the previous errors and doubled down against transparency and accountability. I look forward to the CAO bringing back a full recommendation and to the board appropriately funding the new.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Youssef Miller, North County Equity and Justice Coalition, Saving Lives in Custody California, representing the true impacted people of this issue. I support the office of the inspector general. And all of the 25 or so listed oversight that the sheriff says she has, where were they in 2019 when Elisa Serna died? In 2020, '21, '22, '23, '24, and '25, where were they then? We see that they're not making any impact, and this is a study of how the office of inspector general will work. It's a study, a feasibility study, not to require one at this time. So yes, it is feasible, and it should be found feasible. I hope they find it feasible, because we've been losing lives all this, all these years, so much so that we have legislation that passed to help save lives in custody, two legislations that became law, and a state audit that showed the same, and people who actually represent these families who have been suffering every single day. Please say yes.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will begin with our first caller.
Just made a new set of rules for CLRB. It's under new leadership. Let's give it a chance to act before we set up an office of inspector general, which is a new, expensive bureaucrat, which might end up being as corrupt as the old CLRB. Then there's would be a second office under the county to investigate matters investigated by the county, which is an actual or alleged crimes committed by the county. And the county is fighting a number of these in courts, setting up an OIG, weeks of conflict of interest. Do you want the OIG to investigate crimes? Why not include all crimes alleged to have been committed under county auspices, like child abuse, animal abuse, separation of families, et cetera? It seems to me that the proposed OIG and CLRB have...
We'll hear from the next caller. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, great. So let's see, Trouble in Paradise, Government Overreaching Again, some I didn't get to. If you want the OIG to investigate crimes, why not include all crimes alleged to have been committed under county auspices, like child abuse, animal abuse, separation of families, and all that stuff? It seems to him and me that the proposed OIG and CLRB have pretty much the same powers, so perhaps the two agencies should be merged. I really don't care, because I don't believe in the system. The system is corrupt. It's for the criminals. The criminals make the laws. And yeah.
We'll hear from the next caller.
We strongly support establishing an office of the inspector general. San Diego County jails have some of the highest in custody death rates in California. Families across San Diego have sought answers for years, and asked us to why their loved ones suffer abuse, are discriminated against, or have died in county jails, but they haven't gotten any. While CLRB does a great job, it does not have enough jurisdiction or authority. When CLRB's investigative reports provide recommendations, they're ignored. There is no mechanism to ensure they're implemented. This office will help establish mechanisms of transparency and accountability. It has independent oversight with the director board and authority to monitor conditions, review use of force patterns, and prevent misconduct or contract failures, including in health and mental health services. Vote yes, establish this office, and take a step toward addressing our county jail crisis. Lead innovative solutions to problems that are traumatizing San Diegans. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Also, you should have implemented changes before the Serna lawsuit. Now both law enforcement and inmates are going to further suffer, when both deserve better from this board. If we can't even find justice via Monica's ally, Bonehead Bonta, how would anyone find it with yet another minion as inspector general with even less authority? How would a county-led audit or investigation be preferred to a third-party independent audit or investigation? How would something controlled by the county answer to both the sheriff, the board, and CLRB, who clearly have very different interests and agendas? It sounds like an OIG would operate as a narc on the SDSO, and it sounds like it would have too many responsibilities, agencies, and individuals to respond to. Wouldn't it be wiser to invest more deputies, or medical staff, or drug tests, or health monitors in the jails? Some of Monica's ideas, again, could violate the Peace Officers Bill of Rights. How would OIG conduct an investigation when government and/or law enforcement investigations override theirs? This has lots of loopholes, and more lawyers never solved anything. Why does Monica want the system even bigger? Big government doesn't work.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Thank you for the fourth board of supervisors, because Monica and the rest of the board refuses to recognize a wonderful petition by the name of Roland Frye. That could go ahead and help you out, and if you want a real study on what's happening in our jail system, please look at an empirical analysis of racial differences in police use of force. And you will find out that most of the shit that you guys say is foolish shit. I mean, please, read his paper, actually look at people that are experts, and take their advice. No more of this DEI shit, where people that don't know crap are now the experts, just because you like to get it up the butt, or whatever. I don't care. What I care about is your knowledge and your experience. I don't care about your sex life, the color of your skin, or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. This is your first warning. If you continue off-topic, you will forfeit your time.
We'll hear from the next caller.
He comes with the Racial Justice Coalition of San Diego, and I want to say I'm supportive of the office of inspector general, and that this... of the Office of Inspector General, and that this, there's a history to this, and we were at this point because of the failure of the Sheriff's Department to adequately take care of the jails, not just with the high in custody, but the tons of lawsuits and millions of dollars have been paid out. Want to thank Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Steph for her leadership on this issue in trying to find, forge a new path for the county. The current status quo of having people die in custody and paying out millions of dollars shouldn't be something that any of the supervisors support. Having this office will give an opportunity to have more accountability for the Sheriff's Department, and also, this is a model that's used in other cities like LA. With that being said, the best success for it will be having a strong relationship with CLRB and that--
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Oh, this is Leila Aziz. Can you guys hear me? There seems to be a delay.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm in support of the Office of Inspector General. You have so many families who've lost loved ones. James Pittman had a note that he couldn't be on the top bunk, yet the Sheriff's Department chose to put a physically disabled person and him both in one cell with two beds. Neither could be on the top bunk, and now James is deceased. To add insult to injury, I get a call this week that there is a man with epilepsy that they put on the top bunk, and every time he goes into a seizure, he has to throw himself off the bunk, on one of his cellies said, and has to go on the floor so he doesn't fall off the bunk. They need oversight. We have a correctional officer at George Bailey, a young man languished in jail for a year because a correctional officer off-duty beat him up, the correctional officer backhanded his own wife, and then the district attorney chose to criminalize this young man. He won by a jury because it was on video, and yet this correctional officer is still working. I have story after story. I don't have enough time. We need some oversight.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Pronouns, she heard. I applaud Vice Chair Montgomery-Steph for bringing this forward. We need more independent transparency around the sheriff's office and behaviors. We, all of the agencies that were referred to have nothing to do with understanding San Diego, the culture that has come up in our sheriff's department, and dealing with it. More importantly, they are worried about whether or not a licensed vocational nurse has had the proper math credits or nursing credits, not how they are behaving or not doing their job. So I applaud you for bringing this forward. We really need more transparency. Thank you. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Well, now hear from the next caller.
Hi, San Diego. This is a critical office that the County of San Diego needs. How does the state have one for the California Department of Corrections and other cities within our state have Inspector Generals for their Sheriff's Department? San Diego County is the fifth-largest county in the US and does not have one. This department is supposed to provide oversight and transparency by monitoring the department's policies and practices. Police policing each other isn't cutting it, and we've seen that firsthand. Our county jails have had the highest, or close to the highest, death rates in the state year in and year out for the past 20 years. As a person who was formerly incarcerated in our county jails and state prisons, and now a community activist, I've seen how the system works from both sides. The people dying in our community jails, county jails, are innocent until proven guilty. Please remember that. I would say supporting this item is common sense, but nowadays, sense isn't so common. So, board members, I ask you to please support this item, so we have oversight within our Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Dave Myers. I am a retired sheriff's commander, 33 years. I want to commend Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Steph's proposal to establish an independent office of Inspector General, which is critical and long overdue, to restore accountability and integrity to a sheriff's office leadership that has repeatedly demonstrated deception, deliberate indifference, and betrayal of the public trust. With hundreds of jail deaths, millions in taxpayer-funded settlements, and a culture of denial rather than reform, San Diego County can no longer retire on internal sheriff's office insurances or reactive investigations. Monica's leadership recognizes that real oversight means independent oversight, one with the uninterrupted authority and investigative freedom to pursue the truth wherever it leads, free from political interferences or sheriff's office obstruction, the critical importance of independence and continuous investigative ability.
Thank you. Chair Lawson Reardon, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. We have Supervisor Montgomery-Steph.
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you to all the members of the public that spoke on this item. Thank you to the representatives, DSA, and thank you to the sheriff for being here. I wanted to, and I'm glad, thank you for your comments, I'm glad that you addressed our conversation publicly, because now I can do the same. And I'm happy, you know, you may have feedback from what I say. I know this is not meant to be a back-and-forth, but when I am quoted, then I feel the need to respond. So let me just give a little bit additional perspective from our meeting and from what set up our meeting and what the conversation has been since my first board letter back in December of 2024, where the board voted to direct staff to then look at what it would take to expand the jurisdiction of CLRB at that time, and also go into meet and confer. So, at the very beginning of my advocacy around CLRB, and I'm addressing CLRB because that's what our last meeting was about, the very beginning of that advocacy, you had concerns about that expansion of CLRB. And this is all public, right? But what your argument was at the time was that costs would increase, the provider wouldn't go for it, we may lose our contractor, and all of those things. When my staff tried to verify that information and to see what that would look like and to either mitigate that or come back to me and advise whether it was possible or not, you said that my staff members were not telling the truth, were interfering where they should not, when we were simply doing our due diligence to check and verify whether what your assessment was, we would agree with or not. So when we met, you had, this is already, you had gone to the media, went to the media before me with this idea of the third party. You did say that this model existed. It did not. You had not talked to me previously about your ideas. So when we met, which was a previously scheduled meeting, I did not brush off your ideas. What I said was, I was not going to change what the, my proposal around the expansion of CLRB. That's what I said. And so, and I said, we can agree to disagree, but what, from my perspective, what you wanted was for me to cut off my proposal, to remove that expansion from CLRB, and then put yours forward. You didn't want a yes and, which I was open to. You wanted what you proposed and not what I had on the table. And so, I don't think it's fair to characterize our conversation in that way, but, you know, I just wanted to, again, since I was quoted, I wanted to take the public back to what my perspective of our conversations were. I also want to point out that I do appreciate the list. These are some of the things that we have heard before. Some of these agencies were all bound by, because they're very narrow subject matter that they hold. Some of these have to do with licensing. I know POST is every single law enforcement agency in the state of California. So, none of these have anything to do with the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors approves the budget every year, and also pays out additional money for attorneys for the Sheriff's Department, when we do not have any kind of jurisdiction over the laws of the Sheriff's Department. So I think it's only fair that we have an office like this, where if we need to call for any kind of audit or investigation, or if you want an outside opinion, as you have stated in other circumstances, third-party opinion, then it would be open to the board, and to you, and to CLRB to do so. So, I think that it's important, I wanted to get those things out. You know, prior to the September 30 meeting, where the CLRB item was brought forward for its finality, there had been, two weeks, I think, prior to that, and I could be off by my timing a little bit, but there had been two back-to-back deaths in our jails. There had been Irma Perez, who I mentioned earlier, who was in Lemon Grove, who was passed by deputy sheriffs, and was left in a ditch for three days and died. And then there was an incident in Spring Valley, which, I apologize Supervisor Gary, this is your district, but we border those districts. There was an incident where someone was beat up by deputy sheriffs in front of an assembly member. And so, all of this happened within a week's time. And I have not gone to the media, I have not, you know, spoke about those things. When you talked about the model that didn't exist, I was repeatedly asked about it, because folks wanted me to say publicly and publicly disagree with you. I did not do it at that time. And so, I, in being an elected official for, I don't know, seven years now, voting on several different budgets, I've never voted to defund the police, so much so where I was attacked by my own community because I didn't do it, and I stood firm and said, I believe that law enforcement has an important function in our community. And I still say that today. But what I couple that with is accountability, and I will continue to do that. I think both things can be true at the same time. And so, I'm going to continue to advocate. I have no idea where this is going today. This is something that came out of my office, based off of our research, as we were going through the CLRB issues, and we decided to bring it forward. So I don't know how it's going to go, but I do believe that accountability is important. I also think it's important for you to have the funding to build jails that house people in a way where sheriffs can be protected, incarcerated people can get the things that they need. I think that's important as well, but it doesn't stop the work of accountability. So, I just wanted to provide additional perspective on that, and I've already made the motion. Thank you for the time.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. You know, this is typical government. You know, when we have a problem, and we do, we have way too many jail deaths. We do have a problem, but government's answer is, we need more government. We need another layer of government. We need to hire more people. I don't think we need to in this case. We've got CLRB. We've got tons and tons and tons of oversight in our Sheriff's Department. And I think we all want the same things. We want less problems with our jails and our facilities, and less lawsuits happening. But what's happened in the last several years is our jails have become the number-one place for mental health treatment, number-one place. The people, a lot of people are homeless, they get desperate, they get hungry, they, you know, do something, unfortunately, might get put in jail, or people with mental health issues commit a crime, they end up in jail. Jail's for criminals, not for people with mental health problems. And unfortunately, we haven't figured out that, to differentiate that well enough. So I really think, you know, I'm not in favor of more government. And we heard from the sheriff today, which she needs. And it's certainly not more oversight. We need more resources. She needs more deputies. She needs more nurses. She needs more people in, within the jails to deal with all of these social issues that unfortunately, we, the county, haven't been able to provide adequately enough. Item nine today was a fantastic item. This was providing many different types of services. A wellness campus, a crisis stabilization, had a crisis stabilization unit, has a mental health rehabilitation center, it has adult residential substance use disorder. And if you notice today, it's one of the things that we all agreed on. It was unanimous. We all want these types of things. And I think we need, I hate to see supervisors and our sheriff and, you know, disagreeing or, but trying to get to the same goal, I think. The problem is, is we need more mental health facilities, and we need a facility where if somebody is a criminal, but maybe they're not that harmful, maybe it's in between a mental health facility and jail. But jail's not the right place. Vista Jail up in North County, I took a tour of it, it's horrific. It looks like it was built in the 50s. It's scary, it's, you know, if you have any sort of mental health issue, you're going to be scared out of your gourd. And so, it's not, we're not providing the right services. So instead of another layer of government, let's get the sheriff the help she needs. Let's get, you know, law enforcement and back them up, not keep bashing them. They're great people. We all live in the same community. We all want the same stuff. But I do think another layer of government is not the answer. It's more mental health treatment facilities, so that we can get the people that need that type of help. Even if they're criminals, they can get it, and jail's not the place for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I put myself in the queue. I have a number of comments and some questions. But before I get kind of to the meat of everything, I just actually had a question to our CAO, and if you don't know, off the top of your head, don't feel, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but Supervisor Desmond mentioned the Vista Jail, and kind of the fact that we all know that it is a facility that is in desperate need of either rehabilitation or demolition, that there's live wires, there's leaky roofs, there's, it's just a, it is not a place for people, that's really safe for people to be held in custody, or people to work. What is the estimated cost? I know we've talked about this for a long time.
Thank you, Chair, for that question. And certainly, the Vista Jail and the replacement and planning for that is a priority for the county, and we are actively and have been working with our capital planning team to plan for that. The estimates that we had in the latest draft of the CENA that your board adopted was approximately $400 million, and since then, we have seen escalation in cost. So we do anticipate that the cost will be significantly higher as a result of what we're seeing in today's inflationary environment, and actually going through the details to scope out the project. I've heard various numbers. I haven't seen the latest draft of the CENA, but I've heard that it could be a few hundred million dollars more.
So, what's in the CENA currently, CENA is the capital needs improvement assessment. So what's in the estimate that our county makes of how much stuff is going to cost that we need to fix, is $400 million, and our CAO says that's an old number, and it could be a few hundred million more, so maybe $600 million to $700 million. I just wanted to say that, to highlight that, because we're talking about an urgent crisis that we face every single day, of people not getting the care that they need in our jails, and beyond just our jails. I think we all share, I think we all share the goal of ensuring that there are no deaths of people in custody. That is something, a goal that we all share. I think what I hear today is a difference in opinion and strategy on how we achieve that objective. I think we all agree that that is really critical, but the question is, how do we get there? So I just want to offer a couple thoughts in regards to how do we do what is morally in our duty to do so much better to fulfill, which is ensure that people are not dying in our custody, being abused in our custody, that people are getting the care that they need and deserve. One note, I will say, is that-- One note, I will say, is that that facility that we had, not just deputies, I've heard many deputies talk about how dangerous and difficult the working conditions are in the Vista Jail facility, but also many mental health workers and mental health practitioners who also are not sworn deputies and who we heard from today as well, who do serve in our jails. Maybe $700 million to fix that. So I should hope that when the time comes, that we can have support from all of my colleagues on the board to find the revenue we need to make those kinds of investments. So I just wanted to note that we cannot separate these larger questions or these kind of holistic questions. There's no question in my mind that there is not going to be one silver bullet or one magic solution to a systemic problem that has presented enormous challenges to all sorts of people who've really worked hard to try to tackle it. I really want to recognize and thank Sheriff Kelly Martinez for when she came on and started, I think she's really made improving, you know, the quality of care in our jails and really trying to take a systemic look at how we do better, a real top priority of hers. And I've had many, many conversations with her on this. So I just really want to thank you for your progress in terms of accountability and training and staffing and infrastructure. And I also want to acknowledge and thank our deputies, who've told me time and again, and I could not agree more, that we are, that the number-one thing we need to do is have the right kind of people and good people, retain and hire good people, provide them the training support that they need to do the job to serve our community and keep them safe. I think that we have to continue fighting to make sure that you all are getting the support that you need, are getting paid what you deserve, and that we can be competitive to get the best people here to San Diego County and that we don't lose people to the Harbor Police, UCSD Police, Riverside County. I mean, you know, we don't need to be junior varsity. We need to be the A-game here in San Diego County. And that is absolutely a piece of the puzzle as well and continues to be one of my priorities. So I think, all that being said, to me, it's not an either-or. It's kind of a both-and kind of issue of, I heard some comments regarding CLRB and saying, hey, why would you want an OIG if you have CLRB? What I thought was really interesting in the conversation regarding CLRB is how basically reactive CLRB is, right? Like, at the end of the day, CLRB investigates incidences after they happen. So that's not great if your plan is to prevent people from getting hurt in the first place. Yes, I think it's an important function to have kind of a truth-finding commission, to have some kind of, you know, mechanism to finding out what happened and have accountability, and especially for families of people. I think that's a really important piece of the puzzle. But we know it's not all of it, right? Because it's only after the facts. So the question is, how do we, not how do we, like, not what's the only solution, but we clearly need some mechanism to sort of step back and look systemically and more holistically at systems and patterns and practices and look at what we could do from a policy standpoint or a system standpoint to change how we do business. So I think that that's what makes me interested in this OIG proposal, is it seems like sort of a missing part of the conversation. And again, in my view, it's absolutely not a replacement for what I see as some of our top priorities regarding recruiting and retaining the best deputies for San Diego County. And nor is it a replacement for CLRB, and nor is it a replacement for building facilities that don't electrocute people or fall on their heads while they're trying to do their job or are in custody and incarcerated. But it seems to be a complement to these other pieces. So I just want to kind of put out there the perspective I'm bringing. But I also did want to take an opportunity, our sheriff is here. I really respect the work that she's brought and the focus she's brought to this issue. And I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, because I know that regardless of what happens here today, it's going to be early days. It's going to be sort of an initial drafting. And I wanted to, you know, kind of at this point, better understand, you know, I know that you have really been focused on having like a third-party point of view. And I'm wondering, but you seemed very unhappy with this OIG proposal as designed. So I think I needed to better understand, what is it about the way that this third-party OIG proposal would operate? I mean, that, I guess that you don't feel like, it doesn't serve the function of sort of a third-party that could add, help you? And how, and I guess maybe a more constructive is not just, why not this? But if this is going to move forward, then how could we think about an OIG in a way that can support your work?
I think, thank you for the ability to speak on this. The model that we've been looking at constructing is more a peer-to-peer review that supports our medical staff and our mental health staff in the jails, supports our people in looking at our policies. Just more robust auditing, but more of one that's collaborative with the Sheriff's Office rather than reports to the Board of Supervisors and then somehow enacting policy that we are not part of. That's our concern. I know that from the perspective of the community, they think that's not accountability. There's no one from the outside. But there are people who are contracted with from the outside that come and do this work. I'm very much in support of someone looking at our systems because frankly, we don't have the staff to do it. And this doesn't include the Sheriff's Office in identifying how I staff all of the responders that need to work with an outside entity that's operated and functions for the Board of Supervisors, in responding to all of the questions about our policies and what we have, and reviewing everything and looking at all of our files and how all that works. And I know you're looking at a feasibility of this and how it works. But my concern is it's not collaborative with our office when we are trying so hard to do better, and we all have the same goals. And I would much prefer an approach where we're working together, rather than, this one feels more like it's working against each other and just trying to discipline the sheriff or somehow. It's not accountability in my mind. I don't mind being more open. I think we're very transparent. I'm very accessible. I can't, I can't express how much information is on our website if people will just look. If people will come tour our facilities and take a firsthand look, if someone will come and look at our operations. We have open doors. We have grand jury tours constantly. We have community tours and reviews of all of our policies constantly. Judges, attorneys, everyone comes and looks at what we're doing. But the lack of collaboration and cooperation in conjunction with the sheriff is what concerns me.
So just to be kind of specific, are you concerned that some set of recommendations, assessment and recommendations would come out of the OIG and then you don't agree with them?
Correct. And I wouldn't agree with them, not because they're coming from an outside entity. A lot of times with the CLRB, because it is so reactive, and I know that you're proposing something that's more real-time, is we've already solved the problem. So they're giving us a recommendation that solves a problem that doesn't exist, so we don't go along with recommendations. Sometimes operationally, we can't do it because of the function of our facilities, the infrastructure, the law. You know, a lot of times, these recommendations conflict. BSCC sometimes will have rules about how we operate around suicide prevention. And then we'll get a recommendation from the state auditor that's in conflict with that, or the CLRB that's in conflict with that. So who do I decide, you know, what rule do I decide to violate, basically, when these are in conflict? It's much better if we can work together in collaboration and look at operations and develop recommendations together that's more of a peer-to-peer review versus someone coming in and telling us to do this, then it looks like the sheriff's rejecting it or being obstinate, and then the public trusts us even less. So we really need to take a look from the operational standpoint and the experts who've been doing this work forever. We have detention's experts and professionals that have done this work for a long, long time. We lean into other jurisdictions around the country. We travel the country constantly. We work with other professionals on best practices. We are actually, you know, we have won national awards on a lot of our programs, and I don't think any of that works being acknowledged.
Thank you. So question on the third-party, what would be the best way to start? It's not a third-party collaborator, third-party what?
Third-party administrator is the term that we've heard. I know there's a couple of companies out there. HMA is one that we have had some conversation with. But it's something that we need to explore more. And I was hoping that we could have that opportunity, but this feels like it's rushing into something, some more oversight that we don't, haven't explored other possible ways to do this work.
Well, I'm very interested in exploring the third-party administrator. I think my question for you is, what would you need from us? Is it just a board letter, asking you, you know, help, supporting you? Is that something you can do on your own and kind of come back to us and say, hey, here's a sketch of a plan? I mean, I think, setting aside the OIG piece, because again, I think this is the kind of problem that it's not an either-or. It could be, it's like very much a both-and. So just sort of focusing on the third-party administrator part, like, how do we, how do we jumpstart that? Again, like, setting aside the OIG piece?
So the thing that, and we're already jump-starting it on the Sheriff's Office. We have a contract, it just, I think it's just clear to RFP where we're going to be starting. We're bringing in a company that will be looking at our medical processes and our jail policies specifically so that we can seek or accomplish national accreditation, the standards of a national accreditation for our jail operations. They're going to look at all of our policies and our medical. So we've already started a third-party administrator. I decided after the CLRB board meeting that we would just move forward on it. I didn't feel like I had the support of this board. So we're doing that already. We want to complete that work. They will continue working with us for three years to make sure we maintain compliance with all of those policy recommendations and everything that they provide us. At somewhere along the way, once we gain accreditation, I think the way for it to jumpstart would be for us to provide the board with a board letter, a recommendation for funding to move forward. Because all of these things are contracted. These companies are contracted and cost money.
Well, first of all, I'd be very interested as this project that, with the third-party administrator gets underway, to kind of be kept apprised. How's that going? What are we learning? What are we changing? What are they telling us that we're doing good? And what are they telling us that we need to do better? So I think that would be very helpful. I would look, very much look forward to kind of continuing to be supportive. I think, you know, my inclination today is to support the OIG. I think this, again, this is not a, like, one solution type of situation. There's like lots of pieces. But that being said, I do think it would be really helpful, as like this feasibility is assessed, to kind of make sure that this work that you're doing with the third-party administrator is taken into account and is kind of included. I know our CIO is going to be doing, she's very thorough. Ebony is very, very thorough. And I can, and I'd love to see, make sure she has a really deep set of conversations with you and what is the third-party administrator finding out, and how are they operating? And how do we sort of like include information from them? You know, I think that these sorts of questions, and I would just ask, I would love to kind of make sure that as an OIG proposal is put together, I think it'd be really helpful to, I would love to hear directly from you, like, what, how do we make this work in a way that is going to allow you to implement these policies in the most kind of transparent, quickest fashion? Like, and also, I think those kinds of questions, well, what do you do when there's a conflict of laws? I think sort of an opinion on that. Obviously, there's going to be probably a lot of options and a lot of ideas that are put together, this feasibility study. But I think having that perspective in the mix will be really important. And I think I'd say the same, even if not in a formal way with our CIO, but just personally, as the Chair of the Board and as a voting member of this board, I would love to get that input and would love to get that input also from our sheriffs, who I think have, you know, boots-in-the-ground firsthand insight. So I-
I think, Sheriff, I can say, we're not currently part of the feasibility study, so it would be helpful if we're added to that work group. As far as I know, we weren't included, so.
I'm sorry. Let me just review the recommendations real quick to see how it's laid out.
And we should start our project with, for the NCHC accreditation. I think it starts in November, so we're happy to give you updates.
I want to give my colleague, Supervisor Montgomery Stepp, some time to read and think. But I would say regardless of what is in a formal, what ends up being formally or not formally in the motion, and, you know, I think we'll see how kind of this plays out on the dice. I personally would be interested in that conversation assessment, but, so just wanted to make that clear from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Supervisor Gary?
Thank you, Chair. I want to also thank Sheriff Martinez for sharing your thoughts and perspective, including your concerns. And I want to acknowledge your internal efforts to identify the abuse and negligence that's been going on. I also want to add that I have, obviously, just like the rest of my colleagues, very serious concerns with what's been going on relating to the jail deaths and the lawsuits. So I see this as an opportunity for us to figure out how we can move forward in a more effective and efficient way. I'm certainly also interested in what Sheriff Martinez just mentioned. I think that that would be good to look at. I also think it would be important for us to do this work collaboratively, since this is just the beginning, or this would be the beginning of feasibility analysis towards what we're talking about today, the OIG. I think I would be very interested in hearing the sheriff's thoughts and comments and ideas on what would make an effective OIG. So overall, I will be supporting this item. And Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp, I thank you for bringing it forward.
Do you have any other comments? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yes, thank you so much. So what I propose here, based on Sheriff Martinez's concerns and comments, is that the, as the CIO and county council are evaluating and doing a feasibility study, that communication with the sheriff be open as far as the third-party administrator and some other efforts that she is working on. I do still think it's important to call out somewhat of a separation. Unfortunately, this is just how systems work when it comes to bringing forward measures that would allow the, this feasibility study to be, you know, not, to be in a position to check off those accountability measures that I think is the overall goal of the OIG. And I don't want that to be inadvertently and unintentionally kind of muddied a bit. However, I think probably all five of us are interested in what the sheriff is doing and, of course, has done and is doing around the third-party administrator efforts. So, and maybe other efforts, Sheriff, that you have, that you have going on internally. Certainly want the CIO and county council to be open to that. I think, though, that there's not necessarily a work group per se. So I would like to keep that direct, direct account the way that it is in the board letter, but certainly have you all communicate and vice versa with the sheriff so that we can also take that into account as we move forward.
Thank you. Oh, you don't have a second? I'm happy to second. Supervisor Anderson?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. The sheriff gave a great example about how there's three oversights. All three give directives, and she has to figure out which two she doesn't follow. If there's a more formal way to have somebody from the sheriff's just giving that flavor, we're going to, we're going to be putting together guardrails, and we may not be on the same freeway. And I just want to make sure that we're not positioning ourselves, and I reflect back on when I started on this board five years ago, that frequently, staff would get direction, and then it'd come back to me and say, this has nothing to do with what I proposed. And we have to rework the whole doggone thing, because it was just crazy. And I get it. This board was down asleep to the switch, and we were moving things rapidly, and it was hard for people to keep up with what we're doing. But there's got to be a better way of making sure that we're not doing all this work and it doesn't lead to something that's useful. And I know personally, after visiting as many prisons as I have, that my idea, after reading all this white paper and seeing it in action, things that seemed so reasonable on paper were so unworkable in person. Once you see where you're working, and who you're working with, and the circumstances, it changes things. And I think having somebody, it's just like before, when we were looking at going after the juvenile justice, and we had nobody from probation on that committee giving input. I think it's a mistake for us- probation on that committee giving input. I think it's a mistake for us to move forward without having somebody from the sheriff's department as a liaison. Who's getting weekly updates?
I'm sorry, just, I don't know if there needs to be a response, but I did say I think that the input is, is important, and the CIO and county council will be engaging with, with the sheriff along the way.
I, I just, for the legislative record, I think what, what I'm hearing is pretty clear, that the author and the maker of the motion wants to ensure that there's some separation, so that there's a real opportunity for accountability and oversight, but also, like, really, real extensive communication on the front end to get, like, real input, not just on the third-party administrator program, but all sorts of other programs, as well as things like conflicts of laws. Is that an appropriate restatement?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Desmond.
No.
Sheriff Porta McGarry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Montgomery Step.
Yes.
And Sheriff Lawson Reamer.
Yes.
The motion passes with Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present, and voting aye.
Okay. Thank you all very much. So now, we move on to item 20, which is Supervisor Anderson.
Well, thank you very much. You know, we're all extremely blessed to live in this beautiful county. However, for those of us who have lived here long enough, we all know that our region is particularly prone to large natural disasters. Just recently, the Coaches Fire damaged homes and structures in my district, and we're thankful for the quick work, outstanding work of our firefighters who kept the fire contained. As this board is well aware, we've been having just approved the purchase of additional helicopter, five for fire mitigating, you know, I apologize, it's a little late in the day, and my eyes aren't as good as they were this morning. Mitigation purposes, look, we're taking serious approaches to preventing fires, but we know over the last couple of years, we've seen fires, we've seen floods. In California, we've seen all sorts of earthquakes. We have all sorts of things, natural disasters, that can impact us. And we need to, we need to be prepared for those. We know that in Los Angeles, and, and even with the city of San Diego, they weren't prepared to meet the needs with FEMA. FEMA in July came out with a preliminary damage assessment guide, and in that guide, they laid out what they're looking for, for a speedy recovery for those communities that are impacted and need their help. What I'm looking to do is help Trump-proof us moving forward. And I think it's imperative that we move as rapidly as possible. I think that if we go out to a bid process, it'll take a couple of years before we ever even get started. And I think that we need to get this data in as quickly as possible. What FEMA is saying that they need is, is a best practice, is they need the most important characteristics of a base map, that is in spatial accuracy and featured, I apologize, I am having difficulty reading. It's a, it, it references Geotags, GIS capacity, and they want to have exact videos and dimensions of everything that we have. Right now, we don't have that capacity. And, and if we were to be hit with an emergency, it would take us a long time to recover the, the resources from the Trump administration. What I'd like to do is move forward, get this done over the next six to nine months, and ensure that we are well-positioned for the next major catastrophe. Having said that, every three to five years, this information has to be updated. In the future, we would have time to prepare and, and put something out so that people could go to an open bidding process. And by that time, I suspect with these new regulations, other firms would be better positioned to meet these needs. So what I'm proposing today is that we move forward with a single source, and that we well-position ourselves so that we don't have a problem moving forward. Some of the communities are losing money because they can't produce these documents, and as a result, are not getting the federal reimbursements that they so deserve. And that's a motion in support of this.
We should go to public comment. I just had a question. Are, what, are there any specific communities in San Diego County that have lost that money?
I believe that the, I believe that San Diego's about to lose money that they haven't been able to achieve. They're working and struggling trying to get it, and I think that dollar amount's 100 million.
This our county?
Yes, our city.
City of San Diego that hasn't received?
Right. They're working through FEMA. They're not fully reimbursed. They're struggling to get the reimbursement.
And the reason?
Because they don't have this infrastructure in place to work with.
Because they don't have the aerial photos?
Well, it's not just that. It's a whole package. And you know what? I'm not an expert. It'd be better, I believe the company is here, they can explain. And we have people from OES that can walk through what's required. But the rules have all changed in July. It's now, best practices are out there. We need to get up to snuff so that there's no hiccups moving forward. We don't want to leave any money on the table. It's roughly $2.5 million to get this done and put us in order within the next six months.
Okay. I have a lot of questions around that, so I'm glad the company is here. But we'll do public comment first, so that we can go to discussion.
Thank you, Sheriff Lawson Reamer. We have 11 requests to speak on this item, five in person and six requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received two ecomments, one in opposition and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 20 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have one minute to address the board, since there, since there are 10 or more speakers on this item. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, allegedly Audra, Jason Feldhouse, and Mark.
This is ridiculous. You guys act like some kind of mass surveillance and having all of this documentation is actually going to help, when FEMA was denying people emergency funding, because this funding has been going to illegal immigrants for quite some time. And people that have been in natural disasters, natural, even though they're man-made, have been set to be like, we need you to pay us back. Yet, you know, all of these NGOs have been getting the funding that should be going to disaster preparedness and being able to take care of things that happen in our communities. And unfortunately, like I told you guys, like, you say F you to the federal government and all the things, they're going to say F you too. So you're not going to get the funding back when you sit there and spend it on illegal immigrants, and it should be going to people that lost everything in the storm. But instead, disasters happen, and people are, you know, a lot of shit happens, and it's, it sucks, because you guys don't spend the money on what it should go towards.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Jason Feldhouse. Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the board. And I would like to start by thanking Supervisor Anderson for bringing this topic before the board. My name is Jason Feldhouse, and I am the CEO, founder of Infrastructure Documentation Solutions, or IDS, a Nebraska-based technological firm specializing in infrastructure documentation and federal disaster reimbursement compliance. Recent, recent changes to the federal disaster reimbursement law, specifically the new requirements of the Public Assistance Program and Policy Guide version 5.0, which came into effect on January 6, 2025, imposes strict eligibility criteria and document requirements for FEMA public assistance funding. IDS can provide this service and was developed because of a loss of 55 million due to floods in Nebraska in 2019. Since then, we have developed a practice that uses 360-degree roadway capture and precision drone imaging, a platform that provides a documentation library and a connection with geotagging.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, final call for Jennifer Royden and Jay Royden.
Mark, quickly, Joel. In the heading, this says districts solved it on page three. It says for the unincorporated areas. Which is it? All districts have drones? I don't have time. Which, all are unincorporated. Okay, this is totally unconstitutional either way, and you don't even seem to know, which is incredible. So it would be reasonable for an insurance company to request that you have footage of your house that they could reference later. It would be reasonable perhaps for FEMA to request that you have that in your possession to show them. Everyone's got a cell phone. It's timestamped, it's date stamped. You could show your address. This is totally unreasonable, that you're going to fly a drone over every area and search people's property, like, with timestamps and geospatial coordinates and such, for something that may never happen to them, probably won't to most people. This is against the Fourth Amendment. Totally unconstitutional. No, you cannot do it. Period. That's, that's the.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone, and we will begin with our first caller.
Like, a fairly expensive thing. It always sounds like a potential invasion of privacy, as Mark said, if not handled carefully, adequate notice, counterangle, and so on. I mean, would you rather have a drone or a perv peeking in your bathroom or bedroom, whether it's an accident or not? Look at the list of stuff in the board letter. Sounds like the invasive scam stuff we read about in the news, and also an AI nightmare. And considering all of the stuff the county has engaged in, like kids in Polynski, separated families, abused minors, and animals, and on and on, you know, it's conflict of interest. Also approving deaths and promoting EBS in the high fire zone, complicating emergency background, wasting our money all over the place.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Orion and Chip Paul the Bold. Okay, so on the surface, yeah, it sounds like common sense, right? Strengthening disaster preparedness. Okay, so let's look deeper. This plan to open up the door to mass data collection and digital tracking, all under the banner of safety. Why are we outsourcing this work to a Nebraska-based private company instead of investing in our own local expertise? Every step towards centralized digital control, no matter how it's packaged, deserves public scrutiny. Real preparedness is about empowering communities, not building another system that can monitor or restrict them. So, before you vote, ask yourselves, which you won't, is this truly about safety, or is it about expanding surveillance and control under the label of disaster recovery? The people of San Diego deserve clarity, not hidden agendas. You on agenda?
I'll hear from the next caller.
Trump fires in his campaign is now Trump proofing the county. Okay, Rhino. FEMA's Public Assistance Program requiring pre-incident pictures and videos is akin to the insurance scam itself. County government has to go all out to get reimbursements for incidents, while the average person gets to lose everything and their house. Permanent digital records is an oxymoron, since anything digital can be hacked and deleted or simply malfunction. And consider that the county does not keep permanent digital records for public records requests. I can understand immediately implementing a necessary expensive ask by the federal government, but if it's not going to be usable by the residents of the county, it needs to be, since we're paying for it with a $2.5 million monopoly contract with Infrastructure Documentation Solutions. We are the ones who own the property being photographed, not government. It must also apply to a private individual's right to insurance claims with FEMA. As much infrastructure as this county building has going for it, there's nothing but disasters emanating from it, especially for law enforcement, which Monica is 100% against, and continues to prove that to be true.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller.
Officer, created the floods. I mean, you guys knew what to do. You guys knew that you have to handle infrastructure. All for this? Was this a potential surveillance over everything because you guys don't know how to do your job? Let's be honest, you didn't clean out the gutters. They had nothing to do with that. And the Palestine fires was created by a person, not the, you know, not the whole earth is burning up. All these disasters that are happening right here is happening because of your negligence? Or people committing this so that you could spread these messages and gain more control? Is it this true? I, I, I mean, and then here's another thing. You stopped me from talking the last part of my conversation. You did not let me finish my conversation at the end, and I was not off topic. So if you want to continue doing this, I could use colorful language. I have no problem using colorful language to go ahead and explain everything if you want.
Thank you. And Sheriff Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Any comments from any of my colleagues?
I have a question, Joel. On this, I'm not always a fan of sole sourcing, but this is to, I guess, categorize and memorialize or whatever video, our current infrastructure. And I'm assuming it's the unincorporated area. That's right?
That's correct.
So that's buildings, bridges, facilities. We're not looking in backyards or, or things like that. But, but we're inventorying the, I guess, our assets in the unincorporated area, that's county-owned assets that we would have to prove to FEMA. Here we, you know, here's the shape they're in now, and now they're gone, or they're burned up, or whatever the case may be. So that's the main intent. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll second your motion.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, I, I want to hear from my colleagues. I'll put myself at the bottom of the queue. I'll take myself out. So go ahead, Supervisor Montgomery Step.
Yeah. Thank you for the item, Supervisor. The Board Policy A87, is that, well, that's what we use to determine the sole source contract, correct? Yes. Was that process, did, did we go through all of what that, that policy requires for this contract?
Ebony, did we go through all that process?
Through the chair. It's, this board letter did go through staff for review per Board Policy A72. And so, yes, we did review it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, but, so A72 is the process. A87 is specific to sole source? Did we go through the A87 process? I'm just, I, I'm, I'm just looking at the work that's being done. I want to kind of, I think you alluded to it a bit, but differentiate between what the county does actually do and what this contract would do. And not only that, what makes it a sole source, it has to be very unique. And it's, it's not a local company, it's an out-of-state company. So I'm just, I'm just trying to determine if we followed our own processes to, to have this before us.
Supervisor, excuse me, Supervisor Montgomery, through the chair. A87, Board Policy A87 addresses single-source procurement, as well as the overall competitive procurement requirements that the county sets forth. The single-source provisions are set forth in Section 3, and there are three types of areas that would apply unique capability, standardization, and continuity. My understanding is that the board letter identifies how they understand that that will happen. I mean, why this particular vendor meets one of those criterias, and explain that in the board letter to comply with the process.
Okay. I don't, I, I still don't really have it. I guess, I guess, yes, I guess we're finding that, the board letter finds that there's, that they meet one of the criteria. I don't.
Does staff perform this function?
If, if I may, at the bottom of page two and the bottom of page five, there's a description of what the unique features are from it, and that was provided by the author's office.
Okay.
And through the chair, to follow up on your second question, in regards to the work that is currently performed by the chair, the staff, county staff, do have a facility assessment documentation that's maintained. assessment documentation that's maintained for our general services, public works, and parks, and other facilities that maintains facility records. Public Works, for example, maintains records on roads, culverts, and condition records, and Parks maintains records on parks and open space, for example.
Okay. Thank you for that. You know, there's always more work to be done around disaster preparedness, so I do appreciate that piece of the board letter. And of course, we have to ensure FEMA compliance. I, I, I am concerned that we're, this letter proposed that we spend $2.5 million in a no-bid, out-of-state contract for what it sounds like they're, the county already basically does. It also is not very clear about a, a funding source. It says unassigned funds. I don't know if we have any unassigned funds right now. And then we would move to the reserve conversation, which has already written in the policy that, that the reserves are preserved for, for true emergencies and not necessarily underwrite discretionary projects. I, I think, I would say this, that the, the, the real issue in my mind is the chronic underfunding of FEMA. Even with meticulous documentation, the agency is notoriously slow to process claims and often lacks the fund to fully reimburse local governments. And I will say this is not, that is not a red or blue problem. I, I have found in the last seven years that has just been, no matter who is heading the federal government, that FEMA has always been an issue. And when I did go to DC and sit down with FEMA representatives, that is a really big part of the discussion that came out of it, was that, you know, there's very limited to funding. So I think the technology sounds pretty cool. I just don't know that it meets the requirement that I would feel comfortable for a sole source, including the fact that it's an out-of, out-of, out-of-state company. I think none of this will really change the dire issue, which is the, the funding challenges that FEMA faces and the challenge of escalating disasters, climate-driven, many of them. So I am, I don't, I don't think I'll be able to support this today. I just don't, I don't feel comfortable moving forward the sole source for this function at this point.
Ma'am Chair, if I may, a couple of quick things. One of the challenges we have is if we went to the normal procurement process, that'll take two, three years. We need to mitigate our exposure as soon as possible. So by going with the sole source, we're able to get it done in the next six to nine months, which otherwise we're looking at four to five years moving this out. And every day, the time ticks that we could be in an emergency and not get reimbursement. The second thing is, nowhere does the county, because we checked, have the information that FEMA's asking for. So we're going to be in the same boat as LA, the city of San Diego, with our hand held out at Trump's whim, instead of Trump-proofing it by actually having the documentation as FEMA has requested with the preliminary damage assessment guide as of July of 2025. And in that, it explicitly references geo tags and GIS capabilities as part of their best practices approach of documentation. This videotaping, us moving out, would meet all the needs that they have. Right now, we don't meet those needs. So while we're piecemealing it together, all 500,000 people in the unincorporated area will be fully impacted, and they're our sole responsibility. I do not want to be city of San Diego with flood, 100-floor flood victims that are still waiting to rebuild their homes and getting reimbursed. We have the opportunity to be proactive, not reactive. But I think, I wasn't clear with my start, and I apologize to my colleagues that I was a little disorganized. The second part is, we've been struggling with this funding issue. And Andrew, if you wouldn't mind putting up the language, we came up with some new language that I believe will be workable for everyone, and I'm hoping it will be.
Sorry, I can't see it, FYI.
Just a moment. Chair Portman-Giri, let me share through Zoom.
And Andrew, if, I can't, I'm having difficulties reading right now. Can you walk through it real quickly?
Happy to.
Thanks.
The revisions that are being proposed by Supervisor Anderson amend Recommendation 1 to read, "Direct the chief administrative officers to identify funding for a procurement to map, catalog, and database the unincorporated area's most vulnerable infrastructure and return to the board to establish appropriations of $2.5 million for the procurement in the Office of Emergency Services during the first quarter operational status letter based on funding identified." There are further revisions to Recommendation 2 to identify the funding and appropriation as needed in Recommendation 1, and a further revision to Recommendation 3, which adds subject to identification of funding and contract award.
So this should alleviate Supervisor Montgomery-Step the concern that you had, that we had in there before. Ma'am Chair, thank you for allowing me to respond. I was afraid that everybody would zoom in on that when maybe I could stem it off at the beginning.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Geary.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Supervisor Anderson for bringing this forward. I do have a question, because the first version of the board letter directed OES and DPW to assess all of our technological capabilities and options, so are you telling me that has happened already and we just don't have them between yesterday and today?
I, I think that's a question for the CAO. Is that correct?
I, I'm not sure what the question is. I apologize.
Just the original version of the board letter directed staff to explore existing tools within the Office of Emergency Services and Department of Public Works. But I believe I heard you Supervisor Anderson say earlier that we don't have that capability. So that's why I just want to clarify.
We don't have that capability. We don't have any videotape of any of our stuff. We don't have a, we don't, that, as prescribed by FEMA, we're short of it. We have some documentation, but it doesn't meet the new standards of FEMA. But I would defer to our CAO.
Thank you. Through the chair, the standards from FEMA, as I understand it, the guidelines were updated recently, and they're our best practices, as we've heard Supervisor Anderson describe. We do meet the requirements. There are additional requirements that could be implemented that we don't currently have in our inventory, and I think that's what the conversation is centered on here. But as it stands right now, we do have the required documentation for FEMA reimbursement based on those guidelines. Thank you.
You do or you don't?
We do, and there are additional documents that, if we had them, would be potentially available to expedite processing.
So we're like an A minus, and Supervisor Anderson wants to get it, be a A plus?
That's what I'm hearing. Yes, that's my-
Whoa, I'm not hearing the same thing. You're saying we've got them, but we could be better, and Supervisor Anderson's saying we don't got them.
We don't have the new standards. We don't have the best practices. We have what other people have, who are still waiting for their checks two years later. And the new standard would Trump-proof it and remove all that.
I do appreciate-
Under, under the current, we would be at, whether they want to accept it or not, if we updated it, it would be done.
I do appreciate that your point of view is that if we had more, if that we had more photos, instead of more political relationships, we'd be at the front of the Trump line. Not really how I understand how the administration's operating, but I do appreciate the optimism. So anyway, but I did have, let me just say, just zooming back, I would say, I think, big picture, um, yeah. Oh, Supervisor Geary, were you finished?
Yeah. Thank you for your enthusiasm, Chair, but I wasn't done.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. I appreciate it. Okay.
So I just want to caveat my comment with, we all need to be disaster-ready. We all need to be FEMA reimbursement efficient. I know this is especially true for District 1, where we've had a number of different emergencies that are climate-related and, and otherwise, so I just want to caveat my comment with that. So my, my concern, my concern, I'm, I'm supportive of this, but in its original format. I, I think we have to do a little bit more homework internally to make sure that we don't have, that, that, that indeed we may not have what we need. I, I, that's why I agreed with the original board letter, that we were going to do an analysis and a deeper dive and see what, what we have, what we don't have. And then regarding the single procurement contract, it, I feel uncomfortable. I know, and, and no disrespect for the company, I, I know nothing about this company. They're from out-of-state, so I would feel more comfortable coming, and I know the urgency, Supervisor Anderson, it's very clear, like, we, we all feel that urgency, but I, I just want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and making sure that we take an internal look and that we do a procurement process that, that is transparent and competitive. And so if, if we weren't to make that change, I would be okay with it. Otherwise, I do have concerns. Thank you, Chair.
And I apologize again. Sorry. Okay, so I guess I, I put myself in the queue. I think, I would first to say, I agree 100% about the broader goals, the rich climate resiliency, disaster preparedness, government efficiency, all of that makes a ton of sense. I think I have three main concerns. I'd love to figure out how to have them addressed in some way, because I think clearly us kind of being able to respond efficiently when you have a disaster is really, really important. So I'm going to, I think, outline my concerns here. I would say the most important, well, not the most important, there's two that are like, is probably central. I think the, the first one is this issue of a sole source. And I did, do understand the challenges around how long things take. But I also take our responsibility as fiscal stewards really seriously, and a $2.5 million contract's like a really big contract to do when we just got the updated board letter, I think, like 48 hours ago, and we haven't had a chance to do any due diligence on this, this company. So my question for the CAO is, if we were to go back to something like the original form of the board letter that was docketed, but maybe put a expedited timeline in there for moving forward with a procurement process, what is the most expedited timeline that we could do that would not, that would, we wouldn't have to do a sole source, we could have a proper procurement for this project, but do it, do it quick, more quickly than five years, in which case we might have another administration and different rules? So what would that look like?
Let me ask our deputy CAO, Brian Albright, to come up to speak to-
Sorry, Brian.
-procurement options. Thank you.
I think, thank you, Chair. Going off the cuff here, I think we'd be looking at probably a, a minimum 70 to 90 days to complete a procurement like that. I'd want a chance to validate it in light of sort of the current workload on what's out there, but that's the best information I can-
70, 90 days, and if we did a sole source, how quick would it be?
Well, I mean, a sole source would, would probably be half of that.
Half that time, but not zero. So we could go, we're saving 45 days, essentially, matriminos, by doing a sole source.
Ma'am Chair, that's the process, and then people have to apply. It has to be advertised.
Oh, sorry, let me just say, I was asking when we'd be able to complete and award a contract.
Well, that was, that was what I wanted to-
That was, okay, so just to be clear, so the, the answer was to complete, not just to put it out for bid, but to get the bids, review and complete-
You know what? I'm happy to take that amendment. We can wait 90 days. I just don't want to be, we, you and here, you and I have been here long enough-
Oh, yeah.
-to remember a two-year process for something that should have taken five minutes.
So possibly-
So I just don't want to be caught in that logjam.
So could we possibly go back to your original version, but with a, a little tweak, so it doesn't just say explore, but says explore and go through the procurement process as quickly as possible and within 90 days?
Well, why don't we just tell them 120 days it has to be completed?
That, I mean, sure. Does that work?
We'll gladly take 120 days over 90.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so that I would be happy to support for sure, because I want to do this. I just want to do it kind of by the book. I mean, 2, 2.5 is a big, is a big number. So that would be great. And I think that seems to address Supervisor Montgomery-Step's concerns, as well as the ones, I think Supervisor Geary was the one who originally said, go back to the original version, so I think that-
Chair, and I'm so sorry, but I couldn't hear Brian very well.
Brian said that they, if they, under great duress, 90 days, 120, they would be delighted and could complete it.
Could complete a competitive process?
Yeah. Include-
Not a sole source.
Yeah, no, no, just by a, a regular competitive process.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I could support that.
Okay. Great, so that was like part one. I think part two, I, I just want to kind of note, this all makes sense. I do just want to flag that there is, I just want to make sure that this data is used properly. So I put together, and I think this should not be, and I'm open to tweaks on this language, just to be clear, this is just about people's privacy, which I think something we all care about is people's privacy. So if we could put up there the, the language we developed, or I developed around privacy, which I'd love to add. So maybe we can all be-
We need screens that if we're out, it goes right here, so we're not losing our, our colleague.
We, we should be able to put the amendment on one of our screens.
If you tap the presentation pre-fundee.
Oh, you can do that. Tap your presentation button, Supervisor Anderson.
I was afraid that that was a nuclear warhead.
Now we have two to six being right there. Is this all new, or what's the new part?
This is all would be new.
It's all right.
It's the data privacy part. I'm, I'm proposing to add data privacy, so that basically, I mean, everyone should read themselves.
Section P.
But it's basically like, look, it's our property, we're going to use it for purposes of disaster response, recovery, and reimbursement, not for surveillance. We're gonna have clear guidelines. We're going to ask the CAO to work with our ethics office to develop guidelines regarding data retention, drones, et cetera, vendor and contracting, that they can't sell everybody's data except for disaster recovery and reimbursement, and that there should be some transparency. And again, I am open to kind of tweaks in this language, but I thought that this was really important. If we're going to be flying over, I, I, obviously, the, the core point of this is to be collecting data on county public infrastructure.
I agree.
But just, you know, we might get some people's backyards.
I agree. And I'm happy to accept this, if that's your second.
I could do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
There, the amendment that I brought up, though, and I just want to be clear, addresses the finance of it. In the original version, it has a comeback. Well, the comeback was to go out for bid. We've already accomplished that. I just want to make sure we're not giving conflicting, you're tracking me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, just to, to clarify, you're basically saying comeback in our quarterly budget adjustment and include the 2.5 in that.
Well, I was thinking the comeback was, you know, future date for the, the bidding process. They're not, Brian says they have to come back. It's, it's moving.
He's done. He's moving.
He's done. He's moving. By the way, record time, lightning's fled, excellent work.
Okay. Okay, so I think just to be clear, we have had a very robust discussion. I think there's been some friendly amendments proposed to Supervisor Anderson, who is both the author of the board letter and the maker of the motion. And those friendly amendments were to revert to the original kind of text of the board letter that was, go explore this and make a plan to go out to bid, but with the edit that we're not coming back. You're going to go do this in the next 120 days. And that was, that was Palma's amendment, or Supervisor- And that was, that was Paloma's amendment, or Supervisor Aguirre's amendment, and mine was um to add all this privacy language, and you amended your own board letter to say where the money was going to come from, so that we wouldn't have to spend the reserves uh today. So that, I think, was what has been made on the floor. I said I'd be happy to second, but um I forgot, the Supervisor Desmond was already the seconder, seconder, secondeer.
Supervisor Desmond, I apologize, that was uh poor performa, but I was struggling reading my paper.
I was hoping you could repeat the whole thing for me so I could hear it again, but I'm happy to sec- to accept the amendments, thank you.
Um, okay.
Well, let me just finish by saying, thank you for that gracious second. Uh, thank you for the chair for navigating this far better than I ever could have. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Um, and so just to County Council, is this all clear enough for us to go ahead and vote?
Chair, if I may, if we can go back to the revised language to just make sure-
Okay.
-that it is clear, um the language that the supervisor asked to bring up, the original revision, so that we can incorporate the expectations in terms of the procurement timeline into that language.
The pre-arada version, not this?
That's correct, thank you.
Um, do you have it anywhere? Poor Andrew.
I'm sorry, Andrew, thank you.
So we want the language before-
Yeah. The original language, except with the tweaked, instead of saying come back, to say go, move forward within 120 days with a competitive procurement.
Can I request asking a question?
Unfortunately, no, that would be out of order, but thank you for your politeness.
It does lay out the FEMA requirements, and I just wanted to make sure that we don't tip over that in the procurement, it'll be important, be horrible if we went to this, and then whoever company was chosen did produce what FEMA's required to keep.
Yes.
Since it's number three, yeah. Um, so just move forward with a, with a proposed scope, recommend, I think number three, instead of return to the board, move, move forward with a proposed scope, recommend procurement, add recommended procurement actions within 120 days.
Direct the C A O to do that.
All of those are direct the C A O, that's in the like, chapeau.
And now what I'm missing is the funding piece of it.
The funding piece is the amendment that Supervisor Anderson made that, um, that Andrew also has in the crossed out version.
If, if I may, Chair, uh one question, are you expecting them to sign the agreement before they return to the board? They'll return to the board for funding and then sign the agreement afterwards?
When is the quarterly budget?
December the 9th.
So I think 120 days is later than December the 9th, so we should be good.
Okay, then can I make a recommendation and change to that contracting language? If you could go back to it? Andrew, if we could say um authorize the director of purchasing and contracting to return to the board, I mean, to um, to negotiate, to issue a competitive procurement for the services described in recommendation one? And upon selection of a vendor and a determination of a fair and reasonable price, enter into negotiations with the successful vendor- successful vendor, and execute an agreement as appropriate, execute an agreement is fine, period. And let's try to-
I, I think the only thing I would say though, David, is you'd have to say somewhere, authors, and upon approval by the Board of Appropriation and selection of, you have to, because appropriation comes first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was, I was going to note, the foregoing recommendation is subject to um an appropriation.
No, that's, and that's all gone? Oh yeah.
Where it needs to be at the end of the-
It should be at the end.
Of that statement of three.
Yeah.
Right there, yeah, right there.
Subject to appropriation.
After agreement, just right after, right after that word, yeah, there you go. Subject to successful appropriations, that's fine. And then if you could scroll up just to make sure the 120 days language works. You could get rid of that whole first sentence and just say authorize the director of purchasing contract to issue competitive procurement for services and return, described in recommendation one, and complete within 120 days, it would make it shorter and a little cleaner.
Who's typing? No way.
You know what, Andrew, why don't you put and complete within the 120 days after execute an agreement on the last line? And that way it correctly says everything will be done within 120 days. You can take it out there, yeah.
No, within, not after? Within 120?
Yes, within, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Within 120 days of, of this board action, not within entering negotiations, execute an agreement, subject to successful appropriations, that will get you there.
Mm-hmm. So everyone following? Okay, great. Oh, our C A O is following, so that's fantastic. Okay, I think this is pretty clear.
Uh, item one, can we go back to item one, because I think that was changed, we moved that. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I think that we want to make sure that it's meeting the criteria of uh FEMA's new deadlines, and I think it's going to need to have actual video photo catalogs.
Do you want to add a sentence? Uh, ensuring that this-
With new FEMA requirements, is that okay?
Because the geo-tagging in the photos and video are crucial to it.
Ensuring ongoing compliance with new FEMA requirements, including geo-tagging and video?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Good work, everyone. Are we ready?
It includes your additional privacy recommendations.
And it includes my additional privacy recommendations. Are we all good? Are we all clear?
Can we all sit and savor it for a moment? Because a lot of work-
It's like a group project? Um, good work. No, I really do appreciate this, I think this is important, and this was a really um, a collaborative effort to, to get to a good outcome, um so we can be prepared to, to fight for our fair share of federal dollars, which is really important. So, um, we've got a motion on the floor by Supervisor Anderson, a second by Supervisor Desmond, both of them have accepted all the extremely friendly amendments. Can we all please vote?
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson.
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond.
Yes.
Chair Protema Gary.
Yes.
Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp.
Yes.
And Chair Lawson Reamer.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you all very much. Um, so we now move on to item 21, improving safety and labor standards in county parks. Uh, this again is my item, but I'll begin with public comment and then I'll have some introductory comments.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 22 requests to speak on this item, 13 in person and nine requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received two e-commerce, both of those in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 21 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Juan Perez, Robert Morales, and Nathan Herronstein, Harrisstein. Harrisstein, thank you.
Wow, what a meeting. Good afternoon, Chair Lawson Reamer and Supervisors. My name is Juan Perez, I am the organizer with IOTC Local 122, the union behind live events. I see events that happen here at the waterfront park, like Cross, and Boots in the Park, that bring in thousands of people to get entertained for a night. That's great, but it is all at the expense of San Diegans. When these events happen, production companies are always cutting corners, whether it's with safety or to save money on labor, so they outsource a lot of this work. They bring in people from LA, Las Vegas, Phoenix, all to save a little bit of money. San Diego's should be working and benefiting from these events and keep those dollars in San Diego County. They pay mortgages, rent, food, gas. Here in San Diego, they are trained, certified, and they live in these communities that are your constituents. Our city, our county should be taking in these tax dollars to fund our schools, our infrastructure, and addressing the homeless crisis. This ordinance will address outsourcing that is happening here in the county, so please vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Robert Morales, I am the business representative for IOTC Local 122. I represent stagehands and live entertainment workers who make San Diego's events possible. Every concert, fair, and community event depends on us. The people who set up the lights, building the stages, were trained professionals who keep things safe and running smoothly, but too often, safety is ignored. Some event contractors cut corners, pay unfair wages, exploit working conditions, and bring in unskilled workers. When that happens, people can get seriously hurt or even worse. This ordinance would help fix that. It makes sure workers get the proper training, fair pay, at least $25 an hour, health and friends benefit, and gives priority to local hiring. It also gives the county the power to enforce these rules, so they actually mean something. Stagehands are the unseen backbone of every event, and we deserve to be safe and treated fairly. Please pass this ordinance and show that San Diego County stands with its workers. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Greg Soizdrol, allegedly Audra, and Jesse Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Nathan Herronstein, I'm the Director of Education for San Diego Theatrical Training Corporation and San Diego Live Events Apprenticeship Program, the only union-backed uh stagehand apprenticeship program in the state. And I'm speaking today on behalf of this motion because I would uh, it is my job to make sure that 2,000 workers inside of San Diego County go home with all their fingers and all their toes. It's my job to make sure that we don't repeat the deaths that have happened in Coachella or Orlando, we don't repeat the deaths that happened in Indiana. It is my job to make sure that the safety ordinance is that we pass, have teeth, and can be executed efficiently and properly. The ordinance that you're, the, the item that you're bringing forward today allows you to come into line with the state 2738, AB 2738, and gives us enforcement power to ensure that there, the OSHA 10 certifications, the OSHA 30 certifications are actually taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Supervisors, my name is Greg Soizdrol, I'm the President of IOTC Local 122. For a long time, the people behind the scenes have had no real safety net. Our industry is gig-based. One job ends and other begins, and that flexibility is what keeps it moving. But two, many employers have used that flexibility as a way to take advantage of workers by paying less, skipping benefits, or ignoring safety standards. This ordinance finally draws the line. It sets a minimum wage, requires benefits, and mandates local labor, keeping those paychecks right here in San Diego County. It also strengthens uh safety standards, that means the people climbing those trusses or wiring those uh systems have the training, gear, and backup they need to go home safe every night. This is about fairness, it's about making sure that people who make the show happen aren't treated as disposable, that no one has to choose between getting paid and being safe. It also makes sure that the ones uh cutting corners don't get rewarded for it. When we protect workers, we protect the industry itself. We build stability, professionalism, and pride in a train that has been part of San Diego's culture and turns-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello all, my name is Jesse Gonzalez, and I'm a proud S C I O 221 member, um speaking in solidarity with IOTC's brothers and sisters. We support this item because it enforces labor standards for stagehands and entertainment workers at higher-impact events in county-owned and leased parks. These skilled workers from stagehands to riggers build, operate, and tear down large county events. They deserve fair pay, benefits, and safe working conditions. We need to ensure we hire local workers, ensuring county dollars support San Diego-based workers instead of out-of-state contractors. And let's be honest, it's expensive to live in San Diego. A $25 minimum wage isn't luxury, it's a reflection of what it is, what it costs to live here. It means being able to pay rent, buy groceries, and not have to choose between safety and a paycheck. Thank you Chair Lawson Reamer and Supervisor Aguera for your leadership, we urge you to vote yes on this item. Sorry about my pronunciation.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Mark, Jennifer Royston, Jay Royston, Grant Deversa, and Cristoforo Gomez.
It's interesting to hear people talk about fair wages and safety, all while you guys are the ones, you know, increasing the cost of living on a regular basis, and then you're like, we need to make sure everybody's paid fairly and all this stuff, and keep it in San Diego, and then you guys letting invasion happen, and you just do disservices to the people of San Diego and say that illegal immigrants, yeah, it's funny Monica, I know. It is, right? It's so funny. It's why you tell people to be careful, and it's okay for you to say that, but if anybody says anything to you, it's a problem. It is. Everything is inverted, and you sit there and you virtue signal like you're so great, when you freaking threaten me. She did, Tara.
Can we pause?
She did. She threatened me, and she sits here and she laughs.
Okay, Audra, please stop. That is not on topic, is not on topic.
She's laughing at me.
It is not on topic for this item, we're talking about the IOTC item.
When you guys, the way you treat them with labor and safety.
All of these things.
Do you work for IOTC?
What?
You said it's about the way they, we treat them and labor, do you work for IOTC? No, so therefore-
No, I know how you treat people in the county of San Diego, so don't sit here and ask if I work for them.
Okay, she's done with her time.
I'm done with my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
You're asking if I work for our organization and I don't, I'm a resident of people, that's a fucking problem dude. Get a fuck- And you sit here and you act like you're for the people, bullshit. And you fucking know it.
Next speaker, please.
You get so fucking funny.
Mark. So, yeah, I'm for this, it's a good idea, $25 an hour isn't very much, they do some heavy labor and uh some dangerous work sometimes, and I think there should be uh people that make sure they're trained and safe. So, yeah, for once, maybe you guys did something good, try not to screw it up.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, great, uh, thanks a lot. Uh, my name's Grant Deversa, I also work for IOTC, I've been doing events about 30 years. Um, I saw the remodel here, it's great, when they redid the whole outdoor thing with all the water, but I've noticed a lot larger events, very large events, national acts, national companies, lots of labor coming in. Problem is, the labor is they're bringing in from out of town because they can get them from a lot less. So what we're asking is since we live in this county, we sort of own this county property, uh, we'd like only people from this county to be hired when there's additional labor needed. Um, there's ways to do that, they submit the zip codes to the people that they hire, everything's electronic now, we can keep track. That's what we're saying, when these events are held on county property, we want people from the county hired, uh, the additional labor that they need, uh, stagehands, riggers, and, and all that. And uh, 25 bucks an hour minimum, it's not a bad idea either. Uh, thanks, hope you vote yes.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person, Bridget Browning and Fernanda Flores.
Good afternoon, my name is Cristoforo Gomez, and I'm an organizer with the San Diego Imperial County's Labor Council, I'm here in solidarity with my brothers and sisters at IOTC 122. Uh, our county parks are public assets, so when privative- Our county parks are public assets, so when private events make millions of dollars in these public lands, the jobs generating that profit must reflect our county's values. And to me, that means ensuring rigorous safety standards and paying a worker's a living wage. $25 an hour is really just a start. It's just barely enough to keep a roof over your head, to put groceries on the table, or refill a medical prescription. Our county has a chance to set the standard and keep skilled workers here, keep dollars local, and to build a fair economy for all of your constituents, so we urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm Bridget Browning, the President of the San Diego Imperial County's Labor Council. We represent over 200,000 union members. I stand before you on a simple principle: Public land must reflect public values. When our county parks are used for profit, the baseline cannot be poverty pay and preventable dangerous jobs. This policy sets the baseline, a survival wage and real safety. It's the minimum of what our community deserves. Behind every big festival in our parks are workers climbing towers, moving heavy equipment, working with deadly amounts of electricity, and working overtime in all kinds of conditions. When companies hire the cheapest, least-trained labor to cut costs, they are playing with lives. We have seen the deadly results across the country, and this policy does the minimum to ensure that workers are qualified and safe. For our entertainment and our economy, at a minimum, we should do what we can to guarantee every worker's safeties. We are here in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fernanda Flores. I'm the political director with IOTC Local 122. First, I want to thank Chair Lawson Reamer, Vice Chair Monica Marie Stepp, and Supervisor Paulo Maguire, and all other supervisors who are supportive of workers and for uplifting the safety standards by bringing this board letter forward. I will say that this board letter also builds off of the work that has been done at the City of San Diego, raising the minimum wage for tourism industry to $25, thanks to our fearless leader, Sean Elo Rivera, and also the safety certifications that councilmember Campio adopted modeled after what we passed AB 1775 at the state. So all this to say, we have here several of the workers who have worked here at the county waterfront park present. We invite anybody who ever questions the dangers of this job by coming and observing the work that they do. They climb the trusses that are up to...
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Support it.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
All the girls again. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
Right. Okay. Recommendation one: Safety and labor audits is okay. Number two: Labor standards is not. Recommendation two A: There is no data presented supporting a $25 an hour minimum wage. We don't... We know it doesn't apply to out-of-town workers. No attachments. Number two B: You say event producers are permitted to hold roughly 12 such events, and there's higher-impact events in county parks each year. Requiring them to set up ERISA or health benefits for just one or two events is ridiculous unless it is just during the...
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Against any kind of surveillance, they were just about to vote outsourcing surveillance on previous... On the previous item, but thanks to concerned citizens who speak up, they decided to go on for competitive procurement and not a company in Frigga, Nebraska. Okay, so I'm always for the people of my county receiving deserved wages. Problem is, is that in some way, these corrupt individuals will benefit. So kudos to my local neighbors that will be receiving what they deserve with what's being said. Please note that this board and local government is not your friend. They're manipulative, corrupt as fuck. When people are thanking Sean Elo Rivera, it's evident how foolish they are regarding local government representatives. You thank them, but in reality, they're screwing us royally. Wake up, dummy.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hey, it's true. If you guys can't keep up labor standards at local restaurants that are using illegal slave labor, how are you going to manage labor standards at the parks? Speaking from a place of experience, I've helped set up shows from lighting to cable tape, to tents, to food, to booking bands, doing social media, making flyers and photography. It's not a union-owned business because there's real work involved, not politics. The state crazes interference into the business, including terrorist Sean Ailo and corrupt union warlord Lorena Gonzalez's AB 5, that took away the right to be an independent worker, have harmed the entertainment business. A $25 hour... $25 an hour wage is ludicrous in a business where most are lucky to break even. Local hiring is not always possible when you need experienced roadies or stagehands, usually from LA. If the county would just hold the violators accountable rather than kowtowing to the political union campaign funders like AFL-CIO or the IOU-IOTC, events would be safer. Instead, we've got dangerous politics by the Communist Working Party that will further destroy the entertainment business and increase ticket prices, typical from the privileged who have never run a business.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
I'm very curious about the rules because it seems like they're arbitrary. You know, people clapped after I said I was going to go ahead and run, and you stopped that. Then someone interrupted to help you out with a question you had, and then you thanked...
The item that we are discussing is Item 21, Improving Safety and Labor Standards in County Parks. So please ensure your comments are directly relevant to this item. This is your first warning. If you're off-topic again, you will forfeit the remainder of your time.
Prevailing wage is great. I had jobs that did prevailing wage, and we slowed shit down in order to get more money. Did you know on a holiday, you get paid triple? It's friggin' awesome. And if you slow down the work, you could get a lot of friggin' money. If you don't finish the job, you could go ahead and do it the next day. By all the way, everyone on prevailing wage, it... You don't have to work hard. Seriously. Slow down your work, extract as much money as humanly possible from the county. This is what they're allowing. This is what they promote. I mean, this is what she wants. Absolutely. Let's go ahead and raise the rate to $100.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller.
My name's Justine Murray. I'm speaking on behalf of the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce. We are opposed to the proposal to increase the minimum wage to $25 for entertainment event vendors in county parks. Businesses in our county, like event vendors, are already struggling with rising regulations and operational costs. Mandating this minimum wage would significantly increase labor costs for event producers, staging companies, and nonprofit fundraisers that rely on county parks. These added costs would reduce the financial feasibility of holding community events, concerts, and charitable festivals at county facilities, which will have direct impacts to local tourism, small-business revenue streams, and local jobs. These events already operate on lean budgets, rely on volunteers, and operate on thin margins. A $25 an hour floor would price out community festivals, charity walks, events, and vital fundraisers. We encourage the county to not move forward with an industry-specific minimum wage increase for county parks and believe the county can achieve its safety goals without implementing a one-size-fits-all mandate. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to make a couple of comments and then hand it over to my co-dokateur, Chair Protem Agiri, and then we will have a discussion by the board. First of all, before I begin, I just want to thank the members of IOTC who have been patiently sitting here all day like we have. So thank you all, and I appreciate seeing you here, and I really appreciate the work that you do to put on events, to put events safely, that are inclusive, that really bring a lot of value to our community. You know, one of the things that we do as a county is that we permit about 10 major, massive live events a year, and they're pretty amazing if you've ever had a chance to go. They're world-class performance performers. They draw tens of thousands of visitors. They boost business, but none of this happens behind the scenes without stagehands, without the skilled crews who build and break down stages, everyone who rigs the lights, everyone who runs the sound. This is demanding, very high-risk work. It's done for long hours, often for low pay, presents pretty significant physical risks, and sometimes is done without safety protections that should be standard. You know, this means working with heavy equipment, sometimes high-voltage systems, where a mistake could mean serious injury or even death. And because often, workers are freelancers, you don't have the power to walk away from unsafe jobs or to speak up when you're taken advantage of. So I believe that morally, the county has a responsibility to make sure that when our parks, our public parks, are used for these large-scale events, these events are operated safely, and the economic benefits flow back into our local economy. So today's actions will bring our rules into line with California law by adopting stronger state safety standards, by establishing a fair baseline for pay and benefits, and by ensuring that more of these jobs go to skilled local workers. So in short, we're making sure San Diego stays a place where big events can thrive safely, responsibly, and in a way that supports the people, the workers who make these events possible. So with that, I'd like to hand the floor over to Chair Protem Paloma Agiri.
Thank you, Chair. I also want to thank all the speakers for coming out and voicing your support, and thank you, Chair, for your partnership on this item. I mean, it's 2025. It's about time that we took a look at this, and I'm very proud to bring it forward. We need to make sure, like you said, Chair, that the economic benefits stay local, that our hires stay local, that we're able to offer a living wage, that we ensure that workers know their rights, that they're able to work in safe job sites without risk of injury or death, and that requires us having these standards, and I'm very proud to put them forward. I will always stand with our local workers, always. And we know that our communities are being hurt by the cost of living and everything skyrocketing. We need to put money back into our workers' pockets, and this is how we do it: by offering this new living wage that they would be able to benefit while hosting events in county land. And this is just the start. This is the first step in the right direction, and I urge my colleagues to support this item. And again, thank you, Chair, for your partnership.
Chair Protem Agiri, would you like to make a motion, or I can?
I'll move the item. Thank you.
Okay. Happy to second. Superos or Desmond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this is the first time I've heard that we've had... I've not heard of any safety accidents actually happening here at the county, or a lack of safety here at the events that are held in our parks. All of a sudden, it's... We got a huge safety issue, is what I'm hearing, and that's the first I've heard of it. I'm sure if there were, we would have addressed that, and I trust staff to do that. I think this proposal seeks to go above and beyond state law by requiring excessive regulations and requirements for minimum wage. This is a prime example of how costs get high, venues' costs will rise, labor costs will rise, and concert tickets are going to rise for all San Diegans. We rely on these higher-impact events for revenue and operations and maintenance for certain county parks, such as the waterfront park here. County residents' wallets are already getting hit hard with policies such as this that only exacerbate the problem. Prices of everything just keep going up and up. I'm supportive of county staff ensuring that everything is safe. I support... I support them doing that, but enforcing a minimum wage in a specific industry is not good for anyone. I'm all for local hire, but we just saw $20 minimum wage wreck the fast-food industry here in California. That $20 an hour mandate led to over 20,000 job losses through more animation and increased menu costs to offset the increased costs. So I'm supportive of safe working environments and local hires, but don't agree with the overreaching requirements of this proposal. And raising the minimum wage in specific industry by specific industry, and so I cannot support the item today. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor by Superos Agiri, a second by myself. Seeing no other speakers, please vote.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson. Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
No.
Chair Protem Agiri? And Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp?
Yes.
And Chair Lawson Reamer?
Yes.
The motion passes with Supervisor Desmond voting no, although there are supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Okay. To my colleagues, does anyone have a brief update report on progress or any pertinent information you would like to share regarding any boards upon which you sit? Okay. No board committee updates. Non-agenda public comment continued. We now resume with non-agenda public comment. Andrew, please call the remaining individuals.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 12 remaining requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, five individuals in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. For those that are requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand in the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I'd like to invite forward Paloma Serna. Paul Dunlap. Jennifer Royston, Jay Royston, and Alejandro Sanchez.
Can we take their time, or what?
Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with the first caller.
Two minutes. Okay. My name is...
Is the file said I'm going to be sued.
Name is Paloma Serna. I'm the mother of...
Hello?
Drive in custody.
If you could just hold on a moment, we have a...
Hello, hey, how are we doing this fine and loving day? How are we doing? Hello?
Yes, Justin, please go.
Anyone there?
Please go ahead, Justin.
So who's talking? Me or the other person?
You go ahead, Justin. Please go ahead.
Who's talking? Okay, are we starting my time right now, or you already wasted part of it by playing games?
Starting your time. Please go ahead.
Okay. You guys know what I'm going to be... All the actions that you're taking, if I find out that you guys shouldn't have been elected, do you know how much money I get for each one of these cost-saving things by just reversing it? Do you understand that? I mean, I love the fact that you guys are making my bankroll bigger every single action that you take. I explained this to you in that 20-minute conversation. I did not tell you the... How I could go ahead and sue you for. As a matter of fact, do class action lawsuits. I never told you that, right? Or I'm pretty sure you have the documentation, because I sent them to you. Do you want to continue changing your rules halfway through, not allowing certain people to clap, but other people could go ahead and interrupt you to feed you information? Do we want to go ahead and say that is acceptable, but clapping is not? Do you want to go ahead and continue changing the rules and all that stuff to fit your personal agenda? It's not the people's will. It's your will, and you will be going to jail over it if you want to continue playing these games. I am not fucking around anymore. I wanted you guys to fix the problem. You don't want to. So now you're forcing me to, and I want to make sure that each and every single one of you, as a result of that, goes to prison for blocking me, for uncovering voter fraud, for firing me because I was bringing up issues, for not allowing me to go ahead and defend myself and regain my... myself and regain my job, for filing the restraining order the same day that you falsified documentation to give me a disability for the rest of my life. Oh, shit, there's a lot more. I am done playing games with you. If you don't want to go ahead and call me, if you don't...
Thank you. Paloma Serna, please go ahead. Apologize for that interruption. Thank you.
This is Serna, who died in custody on November 11, 2019. I am with Saving Lives in Custody California and North County Equity and Justice Coalition. The San Diego Union Tribune just revealed what families like mine have been saying for years. Our jails are operating under conditions that are cruel, degrading, and dangerous. People with serious mental illness are being locked alone in tiny concrete cells for 23 hours a day, denied care, denied sunlight, denied dignity. Cory Dean and Karmin Talib both died this summer in isolation units. Witnesses said that they cried out for help, and no one came. Deputies even served breakfast while Cory's body laid in the dayroom. That image, a dead man ignored while others are forced to eat besides him, tells you everything about the broken culture inside these facilities. Solitary confinement is not a solution. It is a public health failure disguised as jail management. The county has known for years that this... That it has caused psychosis, suicide, and despair. Yet hundreds of people, many with mental illness, remain trapped in these cells right now. This must end. The board cannot continue to turn away while people are dying behind closed doors. We need accountability, medical oversight, and humane housing. The sheriff likes to always bring up budget. She always likes to bring up that it's the facility, these old facilities. It's not those are not the main reason why people are dying inside. It is the people, the deputies, the medical staff, the employees, who are neglecting our loved ones, who are not even doing their job. These two individuals were crying out for help. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with the next caller.
Hey, it's Truth. Protester Paloma, why were you sick for BOSS, Sand Act, and APCD meetings but healthy enough for protest? What's the nexus between Trump and a king compared to Newsom and a king? But I'm glad the union printed signs delivered in a cardboard box for the September 4th No Kings Show were able to be recycled for the September 20th Anti-I Show at the Federal Building and the October 18th No Kings Political Theater Show, where Paloma caught contagious TDS. Ironically, Paloma Antares' royal destruction goal of eminent domain via a superfund designation has already created peasant victims in Nester. From an October 7th Voices of San Diego article, quote, "The Resource Conservation District issued mass eviction notices to all 217 community gardeners and farmers. One reason for the sudden eviction, the district's executive director said, was a series of pollution warning signs at the behest of Paloma Aguirre. County staff said they could do nothing until the conservation district terminated its lease and returned the land to county control," end quote. No queens in this jurisdiction. Next, Joel and Monica's September 21st to 27th trip to Vienna, Austria to learn about socialist housing was organized by the Globalist Policy Leadership Academy and Lassar Development Consultants ran by Tony Atkins, conflict of interest wife Jennifer Lassar. Monica and Joel both each cost everyone $189 in breakfast, $324 in lunches, $513 in dinners, $1,026 in hotels, $252 for incidentals, $2,000 in flights, and $7,800 for registration. Joel had an extra $700 mystery flight. They listened to nonsense, including socially diverse inclusive communities, Vienna's Land Bank, social cohesion, inclusivity, immigration, and race, and government-owned stacking packs. Total cost for Monica and Joel to go to Vienna was $22,854. If you guys had stayed there, it would have been worth the trip. And gaslighter, Monica, you getting booed out of Lemon Grove does not count as public input on a project, and ignoring the concerns of constituents does not make you a caring person. Shame. Get help for your TDS. That's what I wish for you. Have a good day.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that appears to be the final caller for non-agenda public communication.
Okay, thank you very much. We will be doing closed session tomorrow, so we'll be taking closed session comments tomorrow as well. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Our board will be in recess until tomorrow. Closed session comments will be tomorrow. We are doing closed session tomorrow. With that, the board will be in recess until Wednesday, October 1st at 9:00 a.m.